Okay, it's April 16th and I will call the Norristown School Committee Business Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to recess, to go to executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of, any discussion of job performance, character or physical or mental health of a person or persons provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance in writing and advise that it may require the discussion to be held at an open meeting pursuant to RIGL 42465A1. Recall any ANK certified employee A, leave without pay request non-certified employee B. Item two, sessions pertaining to potential litigation, legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2. ESP contract negotiation update, NKSBA contract negotiation update, legal advice related to John Doe 22 versus Town of Norristown at Alls PC 2024-02872. Can I get permission to go into executive?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's April 16th and I will call the North Kingstown School Committee Business Meeting to Order. The first item on the agenda is to recess, to go to executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of, any discussion of job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance in writing and advise that it may require the discussion to be held at an open meeting pursuant to RIGL 42465A1. Recall any ANK certified employee A, leave without pay request, non-certified employee B. Item two, sessions pertaining to potential litigation, legal advice, and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2. ESP contract negotiation update, NKSBA contract negotiation update, legal advice related to John Doe 22 versus Town of North Kingstown at Alls PC 2024-02872. Can I get permission to go into executive?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will re-communicate into open session. I'll just suppose there were no votes taken in today's executive session. The first item on the agenda for open is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, roll call please.
Sharon Earl.
Here.
Robert Hayes.
Here.
Jennifer Lima.
Here.
Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Joshua Frittato.
Joshua Bush.
Thank you. Turn the calendar please.
April 21st, 6:30 PM, joint budget hearing with town council, North Kingstown Town Hall. May 6th, 6:00 PM, school committee business meeting, central admin conference room. April 22nd, 5:00 PM, school redistricting start times and transportation advisory committee and KHS media center. April 23rd, 5:30 PM, DEI advisory committee, central admin conference room. April 24th, 4:30, building advisory committee, central admin conference room. April 28th, 4:30, policy advisory committee, central admin conference room. April 30th, 4:30 PM, health and wellness advisory committee, central admin conference room. April 30th, 6:45 PM, CLAC, central admin conference room.
Great, thank you.
School committee office hours. April 22nd, 5:30 to 6:30, North Kingstown High School cafeteria.
Great, thank you so much. And just a note on the calendar, just always check the website for most up-to-date. So if things change, et cetera, locations, that's where we post the most up-to-date.
Sharon, are we allowed to discuss the calendar right now?
Great question.
Can I make a motion to discuss?
Yeah. You can probably discuss, you won't be able to take any action, but you can discuss.
Okay. I would like to ask that we seriously consider suspending, postponing, a majority of these meetings due to the upcoming bond decision that needs to be made by May 5th. I don't think all of these meetings are time-sensitive and pressing, and I think that we should just be focusing on the most important ones, at least in the next month. I think we have a lot of important decisions that are going to be affecting the long-term of our district coming up, and I think that we need to dedicate and have our administrators dedicate as much time as possible to those decisions. So if we can't do anything this evening, and I have emailed about this as well, I'd like to seriously have us consider postponing these meetings that aren't necessary at this time.
Yeah, noted. Any other discussion regarding the calendar? Okay. Moving on to presentations and recognitions. So we'll invite the high school principal up for the sit presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for looking through this presentation. I'm just going to capture some of the items that we worked on when we put this team together. The high school sit team consists of community members, there are parents on there, there are students on there. We have a department chair that represents STEM, a department chair that represents humanities, and we have some very nice students on there as well. So the sit team that has been working together has been the same team in the last two years. And so just to give you some update, oops, sorry. All right, so as you know, our school goals are tied to the district strategic goals. And so our goals are pretty simple. Our ELA proficiency, we were hoping to have, we had a goal of increasing by 5% from year to year. And the reason for that is North Kingstown High School was always in the 80 to 85 percentage proficiency prior to COVID. And we've always consistently remained that. After COVID, we did drop, like everybody else, and compared to the state, we were pretty much, our drop was not significant. It was kind of aligned to where the drops were seen throughout the state. But we had a pretty ambitious goal for ELA proficiency, only because we have always been in that range. So we were hoping to kind of have a higher goal. And so we were a little disappointed that we didn't meet the 5%, but we were happy to see that there was still growth and we're pretty confident that we're going to get back to where we were pretty soon. And this is just so you can see how the proficiency in the last two years, we have consistently received the highest points possible in our accountability system. So there's been no change there since we are already getting the highest possible points. For math proficiency, our proficiency goal was 3%. There was a statewide significant drop. So again, you know, we were aligned with the state for the drop, but North Kingstown has always been 60% pre-COVID. And so when, you know, looking at the 53%, we really wanted to get back there, to that level, and then kind of grow from there. Our first goal was to just kind of get to where we were and grow. So we were a little disappointed, we did drop four instead of, so we're trending in the wrong direction as far as math is concerned. So we have some more work to do there. We have offered one thing different in math compared to ELA, which was give students incentive to do well in SAT and see if that incentive helps a little bit. So we yet have to see if that is effective or not, but we're trying different things.
Shalala, do you think that might be connected to a lot of higher education institutions removing that as an entry requirement? Like that students might not have their own personal stake in doing as well in those tests as they may have had in the past?
So it might be. There are some colleges that have, though, put the requirement back. It was a temporary for two years, and a lot of them are going back to that. One of the root causes, when we looked at the data deeper, was there was that significant loss, and it has affected math a little bit more than ELA. It has been easier to brush up and bring back the reading, writing skills. But when you, and you know, being a math teacher myself for 10 years, I can say that that gap really is significant, and it costs. And it costs, it has really long-term effects. So that is definitely, we're definitely seeing that. But we want to at least try to get back to where we were. We don't want to see trending in the other direction, so.
Just to further illustrate that, you know, the point that Shavali's talking about right now is the students who took this test last year were students who during COVID would have been going to school for their foundational algebra skills. Those foundational algebra skills absolutely correlate very strongly to the type of testing they're doing on the SAT in their junior year. So just to illustrate that, the math piece is far different than the ELA piece when you're talking about the impact it has having had, you know, obviously somewhat compromised instruction, you know, in that foundational year. That's going to show itself for years to come.
All right. And then this, again, this chart just shows you that in the last two years, regardless of where the proficiency level is, these are the number of points that we have been receiving towards our accountability system. So we are still at the two-point scale. This is just, so with every proficiency goal that we have, we obviously always want to look at our sub-populations to make sure that we're not just growing overall, but we're also looking at certain populations that are underserved and that we're making gains in there as well. So we, in our deeper steps, if you looked at our plan, we do have a 2% increase that we like to see. So we like to look at it and try to push that number. So this doesn't look as great, but for the economically disadvantaged ELA, we actually have dropped 2% every year is the other way that we want to go. But we are also excited to see the math where you see overall drop, but then you do see the certain populations that we do focus on have kind of like state studies. So that has been good. Again, the MLO is really, was really small to look at, but a lot of it stands at zero, which is not good. And then that is students with disabilities. And again, there was a significant growth that was made, and it was, while we didn't grow the 2%, we were happy to see that that has been maintained as far as proficiency is concerned. And there's slight growth for math, in spite of the drop in the overall growth. This is tricky, only because we had a very ambitious goal. The first year that North Kingstown High School received a two-star rating was because of how our MLO students didn't meet their targets. And that was a significant drop for the school in that area. And so we, last year, we had a very ambitious goal, and we made some significant changes in our programming. We also made some changes in how we're giving instruction. We divided the time between the supports that the students are receiving for their classroom, but also spending time in their access and reading, writing, and English skills. A lot of time that can happen at the high school level. Everybody tends to focus on graduation. And then we, you know, the focus to make sure that we are preparing these kids for future, not just for graduation. Sometimes that can fall apart, so we really focused on that. I want to be very fair, that growth seems significant, but there was also an adjustment of target. So we're not sure, we are looking into this data deeper to see how much did we actually grow versus how much of the benefit did we receive because of just the adjustment of targets. I want to say that we, I want, I'm hoping that some of the work that we have done has actually helped with growth for those students, but I don't have that information right now. That's one of the things the sit team is looking at this year. Questions on this? All right. And again, we, because of the adjustment in the target, we are doing better as far as accountability system is concerned. So we were receiving one point because of the low growth, but now we are receiving two points towards the accountability system for MLO students. Our goal number four, so this is the one that we had to do a lot of exploration on. Those are the ELA, the math, those are simple ones, right? Those are really easy ones, no brainers, you want to see growth. The one area we wanted to look at as a school, what are the areas where we are doing really well? And then what are the areas where we really need to focus on? So we looked at, we looked at diploma plus data, which is, which comes from RIDE, which kind of basically says every student in your school should be working towards college or career readiness. So again, what we found is 80% of our students that participate in AP, participate in dual enrollment courses. They go to four or two-year college, and they do really well. And that really comprises of almost 80% of our, 80 to 85% of our students attending North Kingstown High School. Historically, we have looked at it. The 15% of the students that, you know, don't take the AP courses or don't enroll in college or dual enrollment courses. They are in either CP courses or they are in some kind of intervention support classes. Those are the students. They don't have any opportunity to earn the diploma plus, which is college credits, AP courses, or industry-level credentials. So if those students, 15% of the students, had opportunities, if they didn't want to go to college, that's fine, that's their choice. But if they wanted to enroll or get engaged in some kind of career-based programming, there were very little, there are very little opportunities at our high school. And so we decided that this is a good goal for us, that we want to continue to support our four CTE programs that are very, very college-heavy with credentials, college credits. But we wanted to start exploring the career readiness. So as you know, last year, we had a goal of starting to expand these programs towards career-based. And so we did add the machinist program, but we do want to add other ones that are on there. The biggest roadblock we have is obviously like capital investment, that's what we need. We really, in order to continue this trend, we're happy to get to the machinist, and that has been a heavy lift, as you all know. Thank you for all the support. But again, we have a culinary teacher. He's wonderful. He's doing a lot of work-based learning. The classes are full, there's a lot of demand. We have collaborated with Johnson &amp; Bales. They are willing to give students credit if they want to enroll in the culinary program. He's reached out to some businesses to do some work-based learning opportunities. That's all great, but he's functioning out of a kitchen with five stoves. That can't be a culinary program, has to have certain standards. And so what is really, really important for us to continue to do this work is having some kind of capital investment plan, whether, you know, that is our, that is one of our big asks. The other funding is available for all the other goals, because we have teachers. We have after-school tutoring, that's already in place. This is an area there that we would really like some support. Our sit team is very much looking for support in this area. Questions, comments?
I just have a question about that percentage. So 85% of students are either taking AP course?
No, 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 no.
85% are?
College.
College.
They are on some kind of a track.
Yeah.
Whether they are.
Post-secondary education track, yeah. And then, but some of those students do take CP courses and are not getting that degree plus?
Correct.
Yeah, like there's some students that are just taking CP courses.
Correct. And still going to college.
And going to college, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
I think what I'd add to that is, and I think we've talked about this too, is that there is significant research behind students who earn credentials beyond, that carry on beyond high school, have significantly surpassed, you know, oftentimes their, I guess, potential in terms of what they finish. So in other words, what I'm saying is that the more opportunities we can offer for students to earn credentials in high school that go beyond, that they can take with them past high school, including college credits, including, like Shavali said, the industry credential possibilities, including AP, obviously. There's, we're always looking as a high school to look at, how can we offer these more to students? Because they have such a dramatic track record of success.
That data's slightly skewed, though, because the students that take AP and dual enrollment tend to be your higher achieving students.
They are, but there's also other opportunities beyond just.
Yeah, 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 no, the industry credentials, that completely makes sense to me, too. I mean, I'm not against any of it, but.
So when we looked at our college data, so we track, you know, every year we look at who goes to college, how long do they stay there, and that's all through National Clearinghouse. What we saw is about 85% of our students go to four or two- to four-year college. And then out of those 85% that attend, about 90 to 92% of them stay through and succeed. Some of them finish in four years, a higher percentage finishes in four years, some of them take five or six years. But what we're saying is, what we're seeing is that those 85% of students, whether they are accessing AP or not, they are still going to college and succeeding. It's the 15% of students that we consistently see that are not in that data of the 85%. And then they are also part of the data that shows they haven't taken any college or credentials, if that makes sense.
Shavali, before you go to the next slide.
Yep.
The last line, kind of important. Going forward, how will you present to us the request for the funding? Will there be something written up? How will we discuss this so that there could potentially be a plan put into action? What are the next steps?
Yeah, so obviously, the machinist one is on its way. We already have identified funding sources. We have some grant that's coming that we're working through. We are looking to present, so for instance, the education pathway, right? That allows the students to become TA certified by the end of their school, college, high school. They can become teacher assistants, and they can also go to school to be a teacher, and that can benefit them. That really doesn't require a whole lot of funding. It is classroom, which we have textbooks, but I'm talking about programs such as culinary. Digital design again needs lab. You can buy equipment, you can buy supplies from the grants that we receive. The programs that require some kind of infrastructure improvement or extension are the ones that we don't have any capital investment for. And so, yeah, we can certainly propose each pathway and what it's going to require, and I can share that out.
So that would go, like process-wise, Megan, that would go when we do like the annual CIP review, like the administration, Chris, Dr. Dugan, everyone, we kind of put all of those different requests that are coming forward and then present them as part of that, correct, Karen, in the capital?
Right, right. And it's kind of looking at now, what is it that we need to put into that plan regarding space, but also the cost and funding and grants, and where can we get funding from? Is it, you know, are there grants out there? I know that's something Shavali's already started to look into herself, but is it, you know, grant funding versus capital funding as well?
Yeah, and then we go building advisory, like, you know, like that would kind of be the process.
All right. So when we met for our school improvement team this year, we talked about, we've already set the goals, and we've already had initiatives in place. And so we were thinking about, we have things in place, we can look at some of the data, but what is it that the sit team can do this year now that the, now that the goals are preset and it's more about monitoring what are the changes needed? We did, so this year, what we talked about, we added the science testing proficiency into our plans, as you would have probably seen them in the actual sit plan, because science was added into the accountability system starting this year's report card. So we're very new in this, but we're just saying a 3% standard increase is what we are hoping to see next year for our science. So that was a new goal that was added. So I just wanted to point that out, that that was something new that was added in '24, '25. And then we are, this year, are working on advisory restructure. We heard a lot about, you know, students needing more time, more support. Like how can we, how can we help increase the score for students during the school day? And so one of the ideas that have been coming up from the teachers and also from the sit team is that we have this advisory time right now in our school, which is about 18 minutes every day. And it's great that the kids get a little downtime, they get to the skipper cafe, they get some cookies and coffee. But we do want to restructure that time where we can do both, where we can, maybe they can have like a Friday when they do that. But maybe we can utilize the rest of the week's time in a little different way. And so the sit team is working on rethinking that advisory time for students. We have visited two schools so far. Now again, it does something really creative with their advisory time where the students can get help or they can even get enrichment activity, or they can just sign up to go play basketball and just have a relief in their, in their day. And so we visited that, we visited Lincoln High School. I know Rob was there at Lincoln when they did the same thing and moved to this time. Very, very positive feedback from students, from teachers for the use of that time. And some of them also offered PSAT, SAT times. That's what students can do. So that's why we kind of, the sit team got involved in this, in this process. We have involved staff in there, into this, so they have come on visits with us. Sit team members have visited as well. We have also met with some vendors about a software, because if we did this, we would need some software to handle where kids go. If this is like choose your advisory, choose your time, go get help, we're going to need that. We've done that. And then obviously, one of the biggest things is something like this would require a contractual change in the union because it does affect the teachers' time during the school day. So we have been talking and had the union involved in that conversation. So that's really where, what we are working on. It is April, so we are starting to develop some kind of a proposal to share with the, with the union to see if this is something that we can do as a pilot next year. So that is all the work from the sit team that has been going on and all our goals. And I'm happy to take questions or feedback.
Questions from the committee?
No. You didn't answer all mine. So thank you.
Karen, anything you want to add?
No, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work. We appreciate you coming up tonight.
Thanks, Shavali.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Pursuant to policy B, individual comments are respectfully requested to be limited to minutes. And just a reminder that this is, the citizens' time to speak, and if the committee does not respond to citizens' comments. The first one on the agenda is Maya.
Maya Lima, I apologize in advance, I'm not a fan of public speaking, so please just bear with me. Good evening, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. As I stated before, my name is Maya Lima, and I'm a current BSW student at Rhode Island College. I'm also the edischooltime coordinator with the Office of Family Learning here in the district. I've been doing a work placement for my senior year internship, and I focused the majority of my efforts this semester on a systems-level effort, where I decided to look at the work of the district's discipline subcommittee. I chose to focus on the subcommittee because of my connection to the district. Having graduated from the high school in 2020 and now working in the schools, I have observed that students within certain demographics experience disproportionately harsher consequences than their classmates. These observations are supported by the data from the 2021, 2022 school year that is reflected in the 2023 equity audit, which led to the creation of the committee to begin with. The dataset shows that students from the following groups have, on average, two times the risk of receiving a disciplinary referral than other students in the district: African-American or Black, Hispanic or Latinx, multiracial, male, differently abled, and free or reduced lunch. At the middle school and high school level, the suspension risk ratio for the same groups are even more concerning, with African-American or Black students being seven times more likely to be suspended than all other students and free and reduced lunch students being almost the same. I have been a part of the school district in some capacity for the past 17 years. I am also biracial with a white mother and a black father. Seeing these trends in the data for students of color and knowing kids and families who are impacted by the current policies and practices has motivated me to use this internship opportunity to take a closer look at things and use this platform to be a voice for them. The current understanding and implementation of the district's discipline practices and policies appears to be inconsistent across the board according to the discipline data from the previous school year. When looking at the middle school level, there are some bigger disciplinary referrals that have varying actions taken for them across both schools and also within the same one. Rhode Island infraction label student assault was handled in multiple ways, such as ISS, OSS, discussion with student, time away from class, lunch detention, and parent conference. At first glance, this might, this may seem odd, but with the lack of a specific and clear definition, it makes sense. RIDE defines student assault as "an actual intentional touching or striking of another student against his or her will." In theory, this means. In theory, this means that students playing tag would be considered student assault. I understand that I just gave a very extreme and unrealistic, unrealistic example, but it's to emphasize the point that a lot of things can fall under this category as it is so broad. Having clear, consistent, and specific definitions on what the district defines various infractions as can make it easier for district staff to be on the same page and address things accordingly. There also appears to be a problem with how referrals are documented. At the elementary level, there was a large disparity between the individual schools and the number of referrals. The highest school had a total of two hundred and one for the year, followed by the next highest at twenty-eight, and three being the lowest. This could be for a variety of reasons, but I think the biggest one being how the individual schools are tracking and recording disciplinary and conduct referrals. In order for people to see the big picture, there needs to be consistency with how and where these referrals are going. If only major things are being placed in Aspen, there needs to be a common system at all schools where minor infractions can go. We are seeing the consequences of the current discipline system in place with the, with the discipline and suspension risk ratios that I stated before. Lacking clear and consistent definitions for the various Rhode Island infractions leaves room for potential inequitable action and implicit bias. When certain student populations are disciplined at a higher rate than their peers, it impacts their academics and their perception of the school environment and staff. This is why topics that were included in the March twenty-eighth PD breakout sessions are necessary. Only a few people signed up for the implicit bias one, which is a problem in my opinion. I hope that the district looks at doing so again, but on a larger scale. The resources included in sessions like Building Positive Relationships and Resortive Practices would help aid in rebuilding those connections that may have been broken. In the beginning of March, the Discipline Subcommittee provided recommendations to you all, which included adopting the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support System to help establish consistent definitions and clear language across the district. This, along with the other recommendations, are some of the first action steps in addressing and correcting the inequities of the current discipline practices. I hope that the Discipline Committee is renewed to continue their work and that their recommendations are approved to allow for continued progress. We are seeing at the federal level an attack on people's rights and civil liberties. Here at the school level, it is important to reinforce our efforts to protect all students and encourage kids' learning and growth by continuing to take a step back and reshape the current discipline practices and policies. Thank you.
Next up is Cricket.
Good evening, I'm Kristin Kent, but otherwise Cricket is what they call me at school. I've been an employee in the district for eleven years, and I've worked in preschool for those eleven years. So I'm here just to talk a little bit about preschool, and I moved to DA. A few of the things that I don't know if you know, we've talked about being at Fishing Cove in our building in the sense of community, if we possibly move to DA. I feel like as a whole North Kingstown School District, we are a community. All the schools are a part of this community. Fishing Cove right now, for us, as preschool, we've grown for, I mean, I've been here for ten years. It's grown so much, the needs of our children since COVID happened have increased. We are a kind of outgrowing Fishing Cove. Our space for children, our space for PT and OT is different now, we have to walk upstairs. And the programming that we need for these kids coming in and moving forward, I just feel like we don't have the space there anymore, we've just outgrown it. Parking there is an issue, our meetings are an issue, PD is an issue for us. We never have a space for us, we end up staying in our classrooms and sitting in our little chairs and having conversations for our common planning. So I just want you all to know that we do our best at Fishing Cove, but I just feel like we've grown, and we need more space for preschool. And I hope that you guys take that into consideration moving forward.
Okay, next up is Eric.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Eric Drew, 191 Camp Avenue in North Kingstown. I've been an educator for twenty years in middle and high school, and the last half of that has been in South Kingstown at the middle school level. Interestingly enough, I think my comments will dovetail quite well with the last speaker. Looking at the different options that the committee will be considering for the new middle school construction, and clearly there will need to be some changes made with that proposal, the idea of putting grades five through eight in the same building is concerning. And in a new construction building, there are concerns that can't be ignored and might be able to be mitigated, but they need to be considered. You know, the idea that we see greater developmental change in grades seven and eight than we do in five and six, and putting those different ages of students in the same building would almost certainly create changes in what we all consider the risk behaviors that we see in adolescents and in teenagers. I think there are other logistical concerns that don't always come to a head. Fifth grade traditionally functions on the same homeroom model as elementary school. And in most middle schools where grades five through eight are housed together, grades, grade five still attempts to function on its own schedule in order to maintain that homeroom model, and that creates innumerable challenges in terms of staffing and unified arts, special education, and other services that need to be provided to students. It also provides challenges for common spaces and scheduling of time. Most middle schools in this area tend to function on a six-period rotating schedule, where students spend four periods on team and two periods off team. If we were to try to incorporate a fourth grade into that model, it would complicate any number of scheduling issues and staffing issues. And all of that leads one to the conclusion that the fifth grade would probably be better off remaining in the elementary. Clearly, there are other issues with overcrowding that may, you know, be more of a concern at this particular time. But I think the last thing that's worth keeping in, in mind is that that type of a programmatic change in a new building is a big enough concern, but it would also force the same programmatic change at Davisville, which would not have the same opportunity to use the facility decisions to mitigate the challenges. So one idea that I understand is on the table is to move the pre-K to the new construction at Wickford, and I don't know the details of that particular proposal, but it sounds like that may be a more desirable option than five through eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pam?
Pam Panero, 710 Slocum Road. I still have concerns about this meeting taking place during April vacation week. While I appreciate these meetings are live streamed and emails can be sent ahead of time, I think this undercounts public comment. Public comments are visible to everyone, other stakeholders, decision makers, and the general public. This transparency encourages greater accountability from the entity receiving the comment, as they can't easily ignore or misrepresent public sentiment when it's documented for all to see. When many people comment publicly on an issue, it builds a visible show of support or concern. This collective voice can be far more persuasive than a series of private emails, which may go unseen by others. It's also disappointing to me that there were no alterations to the agenda. I can understand having a challenging time with coming up with an acceptable date so last minute. However, I would have liked to see the agenda changed, as I don't feel every item includes time-sensitive issues that align with external deadlines set by RIDE and the town council's schedule per the email that was sent out. If you really think that a six-page agenda and a four-hundred-and-thirty-six-page agenda packet is all time-sensitive, then I would really ask this committee and administration to take a bigger step back and evaluate our priorities, goals, and plans and processes, because I don't think four-hundred-and-thirty-six pages should feel urgent. Also, I bring this up because as I understand, a decision, a decision needs to be made to RIDE by May fifth. Your next subcommittee meeting for the Building Advisory Committee is April twenty-fourth. Your next school committee on the agenda is May sixth, one day after the RIDE deadline. So I would imagine that a new school committee meeting has to be put in place to accommodate this. I would hope that this could be discussed tonight, so there is plenty of time to let the public know of when a new meeting would be made, or if RIDE has made some extension that I don't know about. Onto the many issues that are on the agenda. I would love to hear about how the middle school bond project, the potential pre-K move to DA, and redistricting all tie in together. I would like to know how one decision is going to impact the rest of the decisions. And I would really love to see a clear vision for what the district will look like in one year, five years, and ten years, as far as building usage goes. I really haven't seen a clear vision for this. I also have some confusion about the five-hundred-and-twenty-five student enrollment number for the middle school project, and hope that this is fleshed out more as far as benefits, negatives, impacts, and how it came to be. If the programming changes at the middle school project, which was discussed at the Building Subcommittee meeting, how does this impact the CIP list? I personally like the idea of pre-K and middle school, but what would the cost or adjustment to the project be? If you did five through eight at both middle schools, what would the cost or adjustments be? And how would it affect the CIP list? Because it was identified that the Policy Advisory Committee needed to expand membership, I feel it would be prudent to have that completed before any more policies are changed, unless it is mandated that the policy be changed. I also do not approve of the dress code policy. I personally think, I believe Mr. Mezzanati alluded to it, that it could be solved in other ways from the administration, streamlining the handbooks, and I don't think we need a dress code policy that is really not a policy at all and holds students to no standards and does not do them any justice when preparing them for the work environment and their future. Thank you.
Hi, Teresa.
Good evening, thank you, Teresa Hirsch. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I would like to highlight just three concerns for the school committee and all the residents: segregation, safety, and budget, all pertaining in particular to redistricting and equity. First, the budget. After attending the Building Advisory Subcommittee meeting, I can confirm that the budget for the bond is currently disproportionately funding the building of the new Wickford Middle School. The bond was, of course, intended to rebuild the middle school as well as cover improvements equitable at Davisville and all of the updates for the elementary schools throughout NK. We first heard about the disproportionate spending at the last Subcommittee meeting, and again, the most recent Building Advisory Subcommittee meeting where they did discuss cutting costs. One standout savings that was mentioned is the possibility of replacing the planned geothermal system at Wickford, the new Wickford Middle School, costing around six million dollars, and instead choose to purchase green energy credits and/or installation of solar panels to achieve net zero. This is obviously very different, but would allow preserving spending to be used immediately on walls in our elementary schools and other updates to keep our schools well-maintained and equitable. And I hope that this will be a priority. Secondly, safety. Megan Riley shared a study produced in 2016 and done by NASDAQ and RIDE, which found that locating the preschool at Davisville Academy was not recommended due to shared spaces, specifically nurses' room, gym, and auditorium. And Dr. Duvie did mention at our last Subcommittee meeting on start times and redistricting that the programs have changed and the study is outdated. But I'm just here to ask, since the high schoolers would remain in the building and the shared spaces would remain the same, what exactly has changed that makes Davisville Academy a better fit now than when the study was done? And having attended the building meeting, I'm impressed with the idea of putting a preschool in the new school. So what is the rush moving over to Davisville and then moving again? You know, you end up building a playground, hiring people that I'm sure can move with the school, but it seems like there'll be expenses there that if we could squeak it out in Fishing Cove would be, would be a savings, when we really need a savings. And then finally, segregation. And most importantly, I'm here tonight because I received two emails this week from school Subcommittee member and Dr. Duvie, both asking me to stop misleading or talking about segregation in response to my emails to them about the concerns for tonight, because I've been traveling all day. I did not intend to be here at all tonight. But I'm here because, not because I want to talk about segregation, but because I'm uncomfortable with what I'm seeing. Segregation is historically the moving of one race or ethnic group to one location, you know, equal but separate. I am here today because after listening to ethnically diverse families from Reynolds Farm, from South Korea, and India, and Hispanic descent, they've been to many of the Subcommittee meetings and the last school board meetings. And speaking about it repeatedly, I just want to be here and echo their point. These families are right to point out the inequity of this move, and I want to continue to repeat what they've been saying at the meetings. Reynolds Farm is being moved awkwardly over an overpass into a different neighborhood school, which already has a majority of minority students. A neighborhood which is geographically shared with another elementary school, Forest Park, that was shown recently in a demographic study to be crowded, and that was just done for a recent bond. These schools are about a mile and a half or so apart, Forest Park and Quonset. Why is Forest Park not being discussed for redistribution into Quonset instead of moving, plucking out off Post Road Reynolds Farm, awkwardly placing it in a different neighborhood? In addition, the students that would take the places of those being moved from Reynolds Farm are vastly white. Whether it was done on purpose does not matter, it's by definition segregation. How did NKSD pay for a demographic study without ethnicity data? Where can we see the data for this proposed redistricting and see before and after numbers about ethnicity? I would ask that you take the time, as we have concerns about racism in our high school, the DEI recent Subcommittee meeting mentioned it, talked about it. There was another young woman here talking about it tonight. Please take the time and sensitivity and do not redistrict Reynolds Farm to Quonset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Warbeck, Saunders Town, Rhode Island. At the April seventh Building Subcommittee meeting at the high school, I was concerned to hear that the energy status of our new middle school could be put in jeopardy to provide immediate upfront savings. We have an opportunity to build the first truly net-zero school in the state through the use of both solar and geothermal. That's a timely and important goal. Before the last bond vote, our town officials rightly supported this direction. For a school that will be with us for more than fifty years, it would be irresponsible to build a new structure that would continue to dump greenhouse gases into the environment into the foreseeable future. We heard last fall from the architects' talks that although the initial upfront cost for a net-zero school may be higher, the life cycle costs quickly provide significant annual savings. Energy bills could be cut in half or more. Over twenty years, the savings, which could amount to over five million dollars, could be used to support other school programs or be recycled into more energy-conscious efforts at our other schools. The far-sighted choice to include solar and geothermal in our new Wickford Middle School is an important contribution by North Kingstown to the state's mandated Act on Climate Goals. It will save our town money in the long run. It will provide a healthier learning environment for our kids. So please do not cut this far-sighted choice from our school plans. Now is the time to move to decisively build a school that takes our kids and leads our town into a cleaner, brighter future. I also want to ask if, as was stated last fall, Rhode Island Energy still has an incentive for buildings with an EUY equal to or less than twenty-five, which would also help in the cost if we build a solar geothermal at school with proper building envelope construction. I had another comment about the meeting on April seventh. The contingency funds were mentioned, and I was, that they were out of whack with other schools. And Ingadnox said that they were, that they used industry standards for their contingency numbers, and that RIDE's contingency figures are lower. I think I got that right. And I just, with all the schools that have trouble paying for things, I don't understand why we would consider not using industry standards for the contingency numbers. Thank you.
All right, that's all I have signed up right now. Would anyone else like to sign up that came in after I grabbed the sheet? Do you want to just?
Hi. So Mike Borrell. So I just want to talk about a couple of things that were going to be on the agenda. One was the pre-K move to Davisville Academy. So I know there's a lot of good with it, that, you know, it allows expansion into, within DA for the program. And then it opens up space in Fishing Cove for positive pathway programs. And then one of the things I wanted to talk about was one of the rooms looks like it's slated for therapy and sensory spaces, which according to like, at least the thing, there's already some space, even though it's, I guess, kind of small. My concern with that is more of, we're talking about redistricting kids due to space and capacity concerns. So I think taking up a room for something and then saying, oh, we're going to move kids out of that school is kind of short-sighted, especially when the latest demographic study that came in says in about three years, 2028, 2029, there's going to be 1,617 elementary school kids in North Kingston. And per our RIDE capacity studies that we've all been looking at, there's only 1,640, like, available spaces in all the schools combined. So we really, really shouldn't be looking at taking up spaces for anything other than classrooms at this point, especially if there's already a space that accounts for that. Which kind of brings to the next point, based off of that, I mean, the 1,617, we're already in three years, already close to capacity. I think I saw one of the things that were going to be talked about, or at least I know talked about in the building meeting, was grade five going to the new middle school. I know there's a lot of good things for that as far as it will kind of help us not go to redistricting, you know, which is a big one. And taking that many kids out of school really shouldn't be there for a long, long time, based off of the studies, based off of our latest demographic studies. So I think that needs to be something that's taken a harder look at and kind of dealt with as a whole and when you're looking at this, not like piecemeal brew for all the plans. That's all I have. Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't going to talk.
Your best you did, so now.
Yeah, I gotta follow that.
You're right.
So I'll try to keep this kind of short. I'm like half losing my voice, so I apologize. There's a lot going on in the community on this committee specifically, actually. You guys have a lot of problems in front of you. I don't envy any of you, and I thank you for the hard work you're doing. That being said, this crossroads that we're at, it's critical that the vision that we're approaching is understood. The findings we're getting from this RIDE study, obviously, I think you've heard a lot about that at the building committee meetings, you've heard some about it tonight, that is obviously a huge priority for the town, for the student population. And its impact on the decisions for pre-K and the decisions for redistricting can't be ignored unless we want to be making the same decisions again in a year or two or in three years. Mike just referenced the fact that by 2028, 2029, I believe, the demographic study shows us at a capacity that puts us in the high 90% utilization of all of our schools by the capacity numbers we're looking at. When you look at things like that and you hear that deadlines for RIDE are May 5th and we're now spinning the plates of, is there a third floor? Can we include fifth grade? Can we include pre-K? These are all great conversations, but quite honestly, I think they need to be effectively the only focus until those questions are answered. Because without that foundation, I don't know how you build a vision to work to. Anything else feels like you're moving checkers around a board. That's not meant to be insulting. I don't envy you guys. You guys have a lot of plates spinning and you're doing a great job with it, but there's just a lot there. A lot of the ideas in the last building committee meeting were very interesting. I was really happy to see those. It's just very concerning to see how close they are to the deadline. And the other thing I wanted to bring up today is maybe a new piece of information that some of you are probably aware of, but Senate Bill 394 recently passed the Senate and is going on to the House for consideration. That would put forth a goal of 70% enrollment of all three and four-year-olds in universal pre-K in the state of Rhode Island. Now, I don't have a crystal ball, neither do you. Will it pass? Will it be changed? I don't know. But to not consider that in some of these discussions in the middle school and in our potential pre-K moves, I think would be a disservice. All that's just to say, I'd ask you guys still, where you can, take time on the decisions, you can take time, prioritize the ones that you can't, and really focus in on creating a concrete vision that is to the best for the long-term future. Thank you guys for your time.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the superintendent's report, Dr. Duvva.
Just one item for this evening. I want to recognize North Kingston High School, you know, their CTE programs. The CTE business program earned a distinguished recognition by the National Academy Foundation in March. The distinguished recognition is the National Academy Foundation's highest level of achievement. This is an incredible accomplishment and testament to all the work of their leadership team, the teachers, counselors, advisory board members, students, and other stakeholders that have demonstrated to ensure that the next generation of leaders are future-ready. And that comment comes straight from the National Academy Foundation. We appreciate the dedication from the department, from the super formally, from this. I just lost where I was reading my name. I apologize. Appreciate the teachers and the students that are part of that program and all the hard work that they do. So just recognize all of them for what they're doing. Get this short.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Duvva regarding the superintendent report? Nope. Okay, carrying on, move on to routine items. Can I get a motion to seal the executive minutes? And as I said earlier, there were no votes taken in the executive session today.
So move.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have the consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda before we make a motion? Uh huh? Say it again. Did you say huh or huh? I said huh. I did not, you're you. D1, 2, and 3?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other ones? Okay. Do you want to pull out?
Yeah, I can. Yeah.
You don't have to, but.
B1.
Okay.
I'll pull out. Just a question.
So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus B1 and D1, 2, and 3?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Nope. All is in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll go back to B1.
Was there any? I didn't see any backup in the packet for this particular one. So was there any homeschooling requests? That was my only question.
Yeah, it was. There was a problem with the board agenda. It didn't load.
Okay.
It loaded at one point and then it went away, but it was there.
Okay, I didn't see it, so I didn't have a question.
And it never came back, but yeah, it was there.
Okay.
Do you?
Were there a lot of requests?
No, there was like four.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that. We'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I did. I did see it, but then I.
But it went away, yeah.
Well, we can double-check on that. And so with enough members, I mean, right over by. Okay, so let's make a motion for B1 then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any discussion? We can just go back and have it reattached. That would be great. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll move on to D. Jen, do you want to make a motion to take them together or separate?
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve them all, but I did one. No, that's a lie. I will make a motion to approve, I'll make a motion to discuss D1 first.
Can I get a second on this, please?
Second.
Okay, a motion to discuss the school photography services for the high school. Questions?
So in the RFP, it says in our RFP that information regarding in-school, low-cost, no-cost offerings by the vendor is part of our RFP, but I did not see that piece addressed by Malino in their response.
Okay.
And that was something that we had kind of made them address in their last bid and it is not addressed. And I'm not comfortable approving this until that is specifically addressed by them.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
Nope.
So Jen, I read, oh, maybe it was just the faculty and staff part.
Yeah, because the issue with this is that it requires, previously, students had been required to go to their studio for senior portraits, which is.
It can be a barrier.
It can be a barrier. And so the last negotiation, we had worked with them for them to provide an option for in-school portraits. And that seems to be missing from it this time.
Yeah, I did see the faculty and staff one at no cost, but I don't see.
Yeah, and it does for the underclass portraits, it's there, but it's not there for the senior portraits, which is the issue. And just the other thing I wanted to note, that the RFP says disadvantaged students. It doesn't say economically disadvantaged. It just says disadvantaged. And if we could change that wording for future requests, I would appreciate it.
Okay, other questions regarding the high school? One?
Nope.
Is there a memo that goes on this one or did I miss it?
Yeah.
Is it at the very end? I was like, I swear we saw it, but there's. Part of the 400-page agenda is, I think, these bids. All right. Rob, as far as the timeline on this, is there, would it be a negative impact to be able to go back and follow up on that if we don't vote on this one today?
No. It's, we have a current contract. This will be going into effect next year.
So it would be, so would you be amenable to following up with them and then we can put out in the next agenda?
Yep.
So can I get a, I guess, motion to table? Yeah.
I'd make a motion to table D1.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for that.
I'll make a motion to approve D2 and D3.
Second.
Okay, discussion on this.
And I just want to confirm that we had, in the last contract, switched for the elementary from Life Touch to Malino, but we are now switching back from Malino to Life Touch.
That's correct.
So it'll be Life Touch at the middle school and the elementary schools?
Correct.
But then Malino for the high schools?
Correct.
All right. If, yeah, that's the one that would have been suggested, correct?
Which is kind of like reverting back to how it has been like for ever, basically. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding that?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll now move on to reports. And so the first item under reports is the financial report. Anything that, obviously, we haven't attached to the agenda, but is there anything the administration wants to point out or discuss?
One first of many tonight. I just wanted to make a comment on this that was not in this memo. So I have made the decision right now to put this as a 24, 25 expense because of the amount, the dollar amount of this invoice that came in. But since we have, since this invoice came in, I've had conversations with the trust to try and determine why this happened and to ensure that it's not going to happen. We've just recently gone through our renewal for fiscal '26, and we think that we've corrected any of the issues that led to this, but that is still ongoing. And then this will be a conversation with our auditors to determine if they want to make this a prior period adjustment to the correct fiscal year. More than likely, they will not consider the amount something to do that, but it is something that will be discussed with them. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none. There's no action needed there, so we'll move on to the advisory subcommittee reports. We'll start with DEI.
The DEI advisory committee last met on March 19th. We discussed the approved by the school committee of the rollout of the equity provision statement. The group made a motion to recommend to the school committee that the survey that was developed from the advisory group to seek student input on solutions to address issues they experienced be sent to the high school students. That recommendation will be on our agenda for this evening. We also continue discussing a potential review slash audit of the district's accessibility, and we'll seek additional input from CLAC on areas to be considered. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 23rd at 5:30.
Okay, any questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next one. Budget and Finance Advisory Committee.
Yeah, Budget and Finance Advisory Committee met on March 24th. At that meeting, we selected a new school committee rep as a co-chair, which is Sheri Kennedy. So the chairs of that committee will now be Sheri and as the co-chair. And then the other chair is myself. We then went into reviewing FY '25, give a date budget to actuals. Leslie went through that for all of us. The next thing that was on the agenda was discussion about the district tuitions. We were looking at the costs that we had over the past year and this year regarding our district tuitions. We also had a conversation of looking into doing an open house for the schools. You know, obviously, something we do next year. That way, families that are currently going to private schools, charters, other CTE programs, they have a chance to visit our schools and see what the public schools are offering. And our next meeting is scheduled for May 19th.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Health and Wellness. Does someone have that report or? Is Sheri can we get?
I don't have that, no.
Okay, we will. Stephanie, can you just make a note to roll that to the next one to, when Miss Anna can be here? Policy Advisory Committee, Jen?
The Policy Advisory Committee last met March 31st. We revisited a new proposed district-wide dress code. That would be the first discussion in that committee made last year, but it also had been discussed in the DEI advisory committee going back to 2021. We also discussed revisions to the charge for the Policy Advisory Committee, which would, among other things, increase the number of members on the committee. Both of these policies are on our agenda for this evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 28th at 4:30.
Okay, thank you. Any questions there? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Building Advisory.
The Building and Advisory Committee met on April 7th last. We discussed some options with the middle school design and some cost options, as we referred to earlier this evening. And then we also went kind of point by point through the comments from RIDE and kind of where we stood with each of those and kind of got feedback and updates on where those things stood with either Inga through Jacobs, or if that had already been answered, or what work needed to still be provided. So in order to follow up on some of those things that still needed, some more work done, we're going to be meeting again on next Thursday, April 24th. If there's anything else that anybody wants to add.
Okay, any questions? And obviously, we have that as agenda item later, but.
Yeah.
Okay, and then lastly, School Redistricting, Start Time, and Transportation Advisory Committee report.
Do I have that? Can I do that?
Thank you.
Okay. So at our last meeting, we had a long discussion regarding other suggestions or alternatives for redistricting. Some of those suggestions that we discussed was moving pre-K to Quineset, not their local Some of the suggestions that we discussed was moving pre-K to Quineset, not Davis Academy, moving pre-K to the new Wickford Middle School building, moving grade five from Hamilton to Wickford Middle School for next year, putting kindergarten in one or two places district-wide, and that way, removing some space from the schools, moving special needs classrooms to Quineset, waiting for the FCI updated facility condition index reports, and consider looking at populations from Forest Park and Quineset, and then also asking for volunteer families to send their students to other schools from overcrowded schools to schools that are less overcrowded.
Any questions regarding that report?
Hold on one second, just going through all of the minutes. We also had some of the elementary principals attend the meeting, and they provided feedback to us regarding the redistricting and the concerns that they have with their buildings. And we discussed the policy JCAA, and that document was shared with the members of the advisory committee, and we asked them to add comments to that policy, to the review. That is everything that was discussed at that meeting, and the minutes are online.
Any questions regarding that? Okay, thank you so much for those reports. Let's move on to other mission business.
Can I make a motion that we kind of combine A, B, C, and D, because they all kind of blend together in some, in some fashion?
Can, can you make the motion to make sure B is first, if you're going to do that? Like, can we have that discussion first? Because I think that is the overarching thing that sort of affects everything.
So, Jen, I can make the motion, if you do, or make, I mean, you need a second.
Okay. Second?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, second.
So, you didn't make the motion that...
We made our own little motion over here.
Yeah, that's not how it works. Okay, let's try again.
I was motioning that A, B, C, and D be combined for discussion. Because they all, like, touch on each other.
I mean, I, I will not be voting in support of that, but you can, so, you made the motion, Megan, you would second it?
Yeah.
All right. I, a little bit of discussion, I just think, I, I don't disagree that they're all friends, but I feel like we need to take them...
We can take, I, I don't want to start talking about one, and then have you say, like, oh, that's the other one, and like, not be able to, like, touch on it.
I mean, you can discuss them, or you can have to vote on them individually.
Yeah, like, we can vote on them individually, and that's why I just said for discussion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still in, but if you get three, we can do it. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, so, the motion is to talk about A, B, C, and D all at once. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, I am no, and so, we'll, you did not choose the order, though, correct? So, we're just free for all?
Free for all, yeah.
Great. Hey, Dr. Duba, what do you want to discuss? No, there's, there's no order. It's, it's whatever Ken wants. Okay. He can, he can heed to your request, but there's no order anymore.
We can talk about all of them, but I don't agree that all, I mean, like you said, they're all similar, but I think we need to...
What I don't want to have happen is have somebody say, like, but that impacts the budget, and then have somebody say, no, we can't talk about that.
Yeah, that's valid.
Why don't we, I will, I will start with capital improvement, 2020 for Bond projects. Okay, so that was the follow-up of the RIDE SBA meetings, teach-to-addendum feedback, and middle school design recommendations. Package, getting my documents. Okay, so, the purpose of this agenda item, one, was to provide publicly, we did a set building advisory meeting, and we sent this out, but to discuss what happened at the meeting that North Kingstown School Department scheduled with the RIDE School Building Authority. One, I want to clarify what was put in the newspaper. We were not summoned there. This was a request of the school department to have a meeting with Dr. Correno and the other members of the School Building Authority to be, to be able to discuss the stage-two addendum and the comments. In response to that request to a meeting, he did ask that we had representation from the school committee and the town council at the meeting, so we had a large representation of the building committee to have that meeting, and that is exactly what happened. That meeting was on Wednesday, March 26th. At that meeting, we discussed the feedback that they provided to us and what they had requested that they hadn't received and what we needed to do. One of the items was looking at the design of the middle school. They had asked us in the original, from the, the comments from the submission in September, those comments that go back in November, was to relook at the building. They told us to look at enrollment and can we increase enrollment. I know there's been a lot of discussion around that, that, you know, that was our idea to increase the enrollment. That was a suggestion from the Department of Education to look at how you can increase that enrollment. They also wanted us to look at the design, and there was some back-and-forth conversation of, you know, does the design need to be submitted now at stage two? Could it be stage three? There are cases where the design does change in stage three, it doesn't have to change in stage two. So, we did focus on the increase of the enrollment. We submitted that. They asked us to come back with a change to the design. We discussed that, yes, that is what we'll do. There is nothing in writing about a third floor, but there was conversation that they wanted us to consider a third floor to connect, to be able to...
If the quote was "up" is cheaper than "out"?
Yes, right. They said if you, if you build up, then you could have a savings, and I want to say could have a savings, on the footprint, because now you have less foundation and less square footage of the footprint itself. They also had concerns with the cost of some of the materials in the design. For example, a curtain wall, curtain wall, what that is, it's, it's a wall of windows versus just a wall of another type of material, which would be a cost savings, as well as looking at different types of other materials in the building. There were also other requests that they had for us around structural analysis assessments that we thought we could put in stage three, but they want submitted in stage two, cost estimates for some CIP projects that we had submitted towards the end, which, again, was a request of RIDE for us to be able to get additional incentives for reimbursement on other projects. Trying to think of everything now, if you want, you know, Megan or Erin, I mean, you both were there to add to that. So, we left there with a commitment to give them what they're asking for. They said, you know, they're here to support, and their goal is to get us to the point of being approved, but also trying to increase, maximize the eligibility for reimbursement on the middle school building. We know that all of the capital improvement projects will receive the 35% reimbursement. They did say another option is don't do anything and wait till December, but we did discuss that and talk that that's not something that we think is best right now, because if we wait, costs go up and everything else. We don't think it's wise to do that, because then you're potentially increasing costs on the other end of what we can do. So, we are meeting, we have been meeting with our project team, which is, which is Perkins Eastman, who's the architect for the middle school, Rouse, who's the architect for the capital improvements, as well as Jacobs, who's our owner-project manager, and making sure that we're getting everything completed for them, completed to be submitted on May 5th. We are looking at different project designs for the middle school to be submitted on May 5th. One of the things I want to share, and this is just, this is from today, and I typed this up just to share with you, which I think you have, which was one of the, you know, from the meeting we had this morning. So, every Wednesday, you know, the, the project team, and I, I say project team because it's the architects, the OPM, Mr. Murphy, our facilities director, Mr. Meznadi, and myself, and we meet with them to go through the work that's getting done, making sure that we're getting all of the responses in play, as well as discussions around the design, and really working with the architects to get the cost down, right? That was a big piece that they wanted us to do. So, some of the options that we are looking at as far as the design of the middle school...
Ken, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before you get into this chart, a couple of questions. Can you please clarify, when you say "we" don't think it's good to wait until December? Can you clarify who the "we" is? Because, you know, I was at that meeting as well, and I just want to know, are you talking about people in the meeting?
No, yeah, some of the people that were there, right?
So, some of them, because I would like to go on record as saying that I did not, I did not agree with that, although it was never asked, it wasn't like a vote, it wasn't as, it was just some people said, we're not waiting.
Right, that we should continue looking at the work that we're doing.
Okay.
So, the option one is the current submission that was submitted to RIDE, and that's the middle school with grade six through eight with the current square footage of 77.7 square feet with 525 middle school students in it. And that was because we were recommended by RIDE to increase the enrollment, because they base the allowable reimbursement for the eligible, for your reimbursement based on the square footage of the building, the RIDE cost per square foot for building, building, your, and your student enrollment in the program. So, if we increase student enrollment, that could help us increase the reimbursement that we're getting back. And that is with a construction delivery, the construction delivery method is through a construction manager at risk. That's the current submission. They did make a recommendation and asked us to reconsider the delivery method, to go with a general contractor, because that could be a cost savings. When you go to a general contractor, there's a price cost, and they believe that could be a cost savings for us. So, then, the other options that we are looking at is for the middle school to be more compact, going with the three levels, a compact design, so not necessarily saving on square footage of the total building, because there's programmatical needs and rooms and spaces that we need to have, but decreasing the square footage of the footprint. And with that option, we can, could go back and just say, you know what? We're just going to keep it at 400 students, like we said. And the reason why we're putting that option out there is to get a cost analysis of all these options, so we know, okay, what's the cost of the building? And what is the potential reimbursement that we can receive? And we know when we decrease the enrollment, the eligibility for reimbursement also goes down, but they're also looking at a compact design and decreasing the cost, the construction costs, all those costs per square foot. So, that, that's one option that they're doing an analysis on for us. Another option is the same three, you know, a six-through-eight middle school, compact design, three-level with 400 middle school students, and taking out the net zero. We know the net zero has a great benefit to us and to the town on utility savings and for the environment, but there's a cost to that. So, if we remove everything that goes in net zero, the solar panels, the geothermal wells, and the design of the building that makes it sustainable, what would that do to the cost and to the potential of the eligibility?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I know the bond is written, just says New Wickford Middle School, but these last two options are not what we put out to the voters. Is there any...
The options that I just mentioned now?
Vote, option three and option four.
Yeah, which I have.
I, I, I'm just, I want to put this out there, like, this is not what the voters voted for. So, understanding that we're trying to maximize reimbursement, but where is the thought around pivoting like that?
Can I explain option three and four, because no one that's watching right now knows what those options are, and then answer your question?
Yeah, and I also think, what, what Dr. Duba is proposing to us is what they are looking into. I don't believe that there's any official recommendation to the school committee from the Building Advisory Committee today. So, this is all just what they're, what they are responding to RIDE for. Like, RIDE said, hey, look at these things, and so, it sounds like to me that the team is looking at these things. Not that anyone's suggesting that we should do them, not that we're moving forward on anything but that. We're, we're looking at all the different possible avenues to get the most maximum reimbursement.
But I would like to know, like, if, if that recommendation came through, how that would, I'm looking to see how that would play, act, right?
Okay, yeah, well, okay, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, and I think too, you know, we got to note, like, this is, this has been a request of RIDE in the comments and feedback for us to look at this and the discussion at that meeting as well, and, you know, Erin or Megan, you know, you can jump in. They brought, brought it up again, that you can bring fifth grade to the middle school, you can bring preschool, right? And, and these are conversations that also happened in the past, right? To discuss prior that when originally, right, original bond that went out in the design, there was discussions of fifth grade going into it, being a five-through-eight middle school, and change at six-through-eight, or bringing preschool over.
Yeah.
And, and so, that is something that, you know, we have to look at. The reason why we're bringing, putting all these options out, so we can see, okay, exactly what are those costs? You know, a note I have here on the top of the, of the document is that all options will show the cost for the net zero and the site work for the athletic fields, because every time we keep getting compared to another school, and we keep getting compared to Providence, there's no athletic fields there.
Oh, I heard you say that in the meeting, yeah.
That the cost for this middle school is not just the construction and demolition, it's also the site work. So, I've told them, we need that breakout, so we can see, if we start, want to take stuff away, what that looks like, and knowing, okay, if we say, well, we want to bring down the cost of the middle school to get that lower and get rid of the site work, then there are no athletic fields. And that's what some of these other, you know, we're going to be, we're being compared to. Like, we have to, we have to compare ourselves to, to, like, if we're not getting compared in that way. So, option three would be the building with no net zero, right? All these, you know, any, any option we have, no net zero. What does that do to the cost? And then, option four would be the three-level middle school, right, grade six through eight, three levels, more compact designs. That way, we decrease the square footage of the footprint, not so much the square footage of the building, and adding on a preschool wing. That would increase the size of the building, because now you're adding on additional space for a preschool. And what we've discussed with the architects is that we need to make sure that that added space also provides the space for expansion to what we currently have. So, we looked at the projections of preschool students, of children aged three and four, and how many students we have, and what can we get to that's reasonable for us, because we also know in our town, we have private preschools. We're not looking to take the business away, we should be working collaboratively with them, but also allowing another option of being able to have children come to a public preschool part of North Kingstown. So, they are looking at a design for that. That design was shared out at the last Building Advisory Meeting. We, the presentation's online, we shared the presentation with you. That, that design is looking at adding 10 classrooms. That way, we can expand the program. Essentially, if you took those 10 rooms, and let's say, okay, we want to, you know, move towards a full-day option for families, for preschool, most of those programs, we probably have 15 students in it, because if you didn't integrate a program, that's 15 students. So, you could get up to 150 students in a program with 10 classrooms. That's the max that you would have, but we'd also look at what are the needs? And do we need to have a mix of half-day and full-day? And you might have some programs that are less than 15 students, depending on the needs of the students that might require more intense services.
And what about the proposed bill? I don't think it's, we don't have, we don't have enough money in the House this year to do it. I don't think Ron is going to pass it. However, since we're talking about the future, it could potentially, the preschool, universal free preschool could be passed in the next two years, in the next three years, depending. And as was pointed out in the comments, if you read the bill, you have to allow space for up to 70% of our preschool population, which I believe you showed us was like 289 or something like that. So, the 150, I think, probably hits that, but if that's the max, and if we go above that... In other words, are, is Perkins Eastman going to look into design that would be able to house that many people if somewhere down the line that bill does pass, which it very well might?
Design for 70...
To house the population that the bill would be requiring us to have, 70%?
We, we can, I mean, right now, we had asked to look closer to 50%. And that is something we can, but that will, that will expand the building as well.
Right, well, obviously, I'm just saying, this bill didn't, you know, pass the Senate until pretty much, what was it, last week? So, to be honest with you, if you're not following it right, this was kind of like, oh, okay, this is something new to throw into the mix.
There's also a question too, how are they going to fund this, or is there funding?
Right.
Well, on the timeline, if that's not a, you have to repass it, and you have to implement it next year kind of situation. There's no way that that will be that fast.
No, but, but we're talking about a bill in three years from now, so I'm just saying...
The other thing that we have to recognize, I'm going to say, I'm going to put a comment out there. We're, we are at, looking to add additional preschool space, and we're building something. We're not building an early childhood center, we're building additional space for preschool. There's a chance, right, that what we build for that preschool, we, we also have to consider that, okay, in the future, let's say, five, 10 years, if things change, you may need to still put some preschool programs in the elementary school if we end up growing that, that space that's there. Because we're not building an early childhood center for the town to take on all of the preschool students, because there are private preschools in town that we can't be taking businesses away from. But there could be a need, and we have to know this. I'm putting it out there, it's like, we got to know this, and, 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 it's out there publicly, that could build this, and in 10 years, might realize, oh, you know, we still... that could build this and in ten years might realize, oh, you know, we still, we have additional need for preschool. We need to put some preschools, programs at the, at another elementary school. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but we need to realize that's something that could happen. So these are the options we're looking at. Where we are, we were told by Perkins today that they can get us cost estimates for next week. We have a building advisory meeting on the twenty-fourth to look at this. We didn't put the fifth grade option out there yet because we knew there were concerns with bringing fifth grade to the middle school. And that wasn't something that we really recommended. So they really were kinda focusing on the preschool wing and the drawings. It takes time for them to put that together and put those designs together and looking at the cost estimates and everything that we, we need. So that's the work that they are doing right now. The other thing we have to consider is that with adding on the preschool to this, they are looking at cost savings, ways to bring down the cost of the middle school building itself. But then when we add on the preschool wing, there's potential that could, that's gonna cost us more. And that will then have an impact on the current capital improvement projects we put forward. And there could be a difference in cost that we then have to look at the capital improvement projects and say, okay, well, if we're putting more money into this project because we're adding preschool, what are we not going to do as far as capital improvement projects? And so those are the numbers that we're waiting to receive for next week.
Kenny, I have to go back and ask, I have to get this cleared up. I, I wanna start at February eleventh, when we talked about, I believe it's probably one of the first times.
Can I just, Jen asked a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Jen.
I just wanna be able to answer that question, so I, I, then we can go to your, your thoughts. So we went over the options. You asked a question, what does that have to do with what we had put out previously to the community regarding the bond? And what we had submitted as the project? I brought up those same concerns at one of our redistricting meetings, brought up with RIDE. And what we're being told is that, yes, you put something out there as far as a bond of a hundred and thirty-seven million to build a six through eight middle school and capital improvement projects for the
District-wide capital improvements.
Right, so a new middle school and district-wide capital improvement projects. We can make those changes, that's just what we have to make. And RIDE will accept that and.
I'm not talking about what's legally acceptable as far as the bond. I'm talking about what we put out there to the community, that what our plan was.
And, and I brought up those concerns at the redistricting meeting, that we are making changes to what we told residents of this town of what we were going to do. And now we're being basically told from RIDE, through their feedback and comments, we need to go back and re-look at the design and programs that are going into the middle school. And they're putting additional requests on us that we need to submit back to them to work towards getting approval of these projects, work, you know, approval for reimbursement. That's why we're doing this, because of what we're being told we have to do through the feedback that we're receiving from RIDE. And re-looking at how we designed the middle school and the size so that we can increase the eligibility of reimbursement back to us. We're also putting pressure on Perkins Eastman. Now, I shouldn't say pressure, because we're working respectfully with them to reduce those costs as much as they can to bring some of the costs down within the building itself. We talked also about the fees. They're getting an eight percent fee for the, the hard cost. RIDE's recommendation is anywhere between six and eleven percent. Their contracts are eight percent. So they're not even, we can't even say that Perkins Eastman is high on the, their percentage back on, like, the work. Because they're at eight percent and it's a range of six to eleven. But they are looking at what's going into the building and the design of the building to help bring down that cost first.
Hey, Megan?
To re-submit.
So the reality is that what we told the voters was we were going to have a four hundred person, seventy-seven thousand square foot middle school with thirty?
Sorry?
Seventy-nine-five. Seventy-nine-five.
Is what we told them.
Seventy-nine-five, thank you. For getting thirty-five to forty percent back reimbursement. That's already changed because we were told at February eleventh meeting, based on the flow analytics and based on the information that at that time we had, that we needed to, per RIDE, in order to get the full reimbursement back, increase the amount of students, so.
Not the full reimbursement, what they were doing was to increase, to maximize the amount of reimbursement that we were getting.
Maximize the reimbursement, and so the number then went up to five twenty-five. In the meantime, through multiple emails back and forth and conversations with RIDE, people have submitted to us and I have had direct conversation, emails with them, where did that five twenty-five number come from? And they said that came from the district, you'd have to ask them.
That's true, and actually I saw the same email, so if I can just respond to that, if you don't mind. That five twenty-five, they didn't give us a number, they just said, if you increase your enrollment, that will help you with your reimbursement. So we did some math with the formula and looked at how high do we need to increase that enrollment in order to maximize the reimbursement? So through calculations of the formula and looking at how many students we have in the district, that's how we came up with the number of five twenty-five that we submitted to them, so that way we could maximize the amount of reimbursement. That's where that number came from, based on their recommendation to increase the enrollment. Increasing that to five twenty-five means now we're decreasing the enrollment at Davidson Middle School. And what they're saying is now, what can you do with your designs in middle school? And what educational program would you change at Davidson Middle School? Or how would you use the space differently at Davidson Middle School? Possibly looking at more collaborative space or other things because you're increasing on the other end to maximize your reimbursement.
So the RIDE construction regulation guidelines shows that about approximately what we're, seventy-nine-five, the optimal number or the number that they give is four hundred students. In order for us to get the maximum reimbursement with the square footage, it would go up to ninety-four-five thousand square feet for the five hundred and twenty-five students. In fact, we put a variance in during stage two to basically ask them, can we keep the square footage where we are? But keep increasing the number. I don't know when we're going to get a response, I don't believe they've responded to that variance. Have they approved, RIDE has approved that yet?
We did not get a response to the variance.
Okay, cuz I, um, do we know when we're planning on getting that back?
That should all be part of the, that will be received with the approval process.
So, so then what happens if they?
We have a meeting, we have a, a phone call with them tomorrow, and I can clarify that then.
Well, because otherwise, if we wait until the application is either accepted or not, or the variance is accepted or not, I mean, don't we have sort of a problem? Like, if they say, no, we're not accepting this variance. One of the things they recommended was you, you can, if you don't increase the square footage, try to bring down the costs. So I just wanna put that out there that, uh, and you have it on here, the four, go back to the four hundred person middle school. But I think that is something that we should consider, provided, obviously, with the cost estimates, we see if we can reduce the cost. But obviously, we had to put in a variance, so we know that really the square footage should be bigger if we're gonna put in five hundred and twenty-five students.
And if we do that, then the square footage goes up and the cost of the middle school goes up. And that necessarily is not going to really help us with the maximizing the eligibility. So that's why we didn't increase the size of the building. What we did is we looked at how some of the room space was being used to be able to allow for the additional students.
Right, and in fact, at the building subcommittee meeting, it was mentioned, two different numbers were mentioned by Perkins Eastman. If we put the preschool in, there was a nineteen thousand square foot suggestion and then there was like between eight and ten thousand square feet. And either way, if we're paying a thousand dollars a square foot, that's an extra between eight and nineteen million dollars, just to throw that out there for just the Wickford Middle School build.
So it's, as far as next steps, what I'm hearing is the architects and the team and the administration, you are currently working through, obviously, the comments from RIDE on stage two and considering basically four or five different options of ways that we might be able to get the cost of the building down, correct?
That is correct.
Yep, and just to clarify, with the cost of the building, we put forward that we were going out for a bond for one-three-seven-two-zero-zero. We were very clear that seventy-seven, zero-six-nine, five-seventy of that was going to a new middle school and that six-four-three-eight-three-nine-hundred was going to district-wide capital improvements. That was, what was on our flyer. The current building that we have submitted with stage two, just to clarify, is not over seventy-seven, oh-six-nine, five-seven-o. But what my understanding is, is that RIDE would like us to change that number allocation, correct? Can I say it again?
So they are requesting us to, like, the cost of the building to decrease?
Like, we said, we're gonna build a seventy-seven million dollar building. And it sounds like to me that RIDE's saying, no, you should build a less expensive building. It's not that we're over seventy-seven, they want us to build a less expensive building.
We're not over budget with the budget that we set, we're not over what we said. They want us to work with Perkins Eastman to bring the costs down of that building and also look at other educational programs, programs that can go into that building.
Yep, and just to clarify too, I know some of the comments earlier from, from the community. So in twenty-twenty-two, we did a North Kingstown facility master plan. And ironically, or not ironically, the person that prepared the facility plan is now the one that is at RIDE reviewing our stage two allocation. And so in that plan, you know, the district at the time went through visioning, community engagement. They went through, you know, different possible options with different goals that the district had. And within those, we were looking at a variety of options. And one of those options was consolidation. And with that consolidation, it was things like moving the fifth grade. It was like putting the pre-K at the middle school and all of, of those things that we're talking about now. And the building advisory committee reviewed, discussed those things and did not put them forward to the school committee because they did not feel like that was the best choice at the time. And so I just wanna, like, these ideas are not new and just popping up out of nowhere and it's April and we have to make a decision by May. We have gone through and vetted all of this since twenty-twenty-two. And I am personally frustrated that at this point, RIDE is basically saying, like, we know that you said that you were gonna build a seventy-seven million dollar building and put sixty-seven towards capital, but we don't think that's what you should do. We think you should reallocate more money to capital and less towards your middle school. And I respect that, their opinion, I, I don't, I like working and collaborating with them, but I just, it is frustrating that we are at this point when this was our plan and we were very clear about this since the time that we put out the second bond. And so I just wanna clarify where we're at because I think there's a perception that people think that we're over what we had said. And that is most certainly not the case. The target has been changed by RIDE, in my opinion.
I would like to push back on that and say that there are many more things that are frustrating about this process than that. The first thing I would say is that when you say that things were properly vetted, those decisions that were put, that one decision to move to Quiddeset Elementary School and build on fifty percent wetlands was made at one building subcommittee meeting, in one session. They were introduced to three different options and they were told, when do we have to vote on this? By tonight. And then they had to come up with a decision, much like what I feel like we're doing right now. And they had to come up with a decision that evening, including in that same meeting, choosing the RFP and the RFQ for the two vendors who I am not very pleased with. So I personally think that they were rushed to make a decision, they made a decision, they put the decision forward. Nobody pushed back on it except the residents. I believe that the only reason that it wasn't built on Quiddeset, or at least wasn't started, the construction wasn't started, was because the residents pushed back and said, please look at this plan again, these are half wetlands. Then, then it was moved, then it was moved, all this stuff happened. And I would also say that I personally think that RIDE is trying to work with us. In speaking with them, I believe that they aren't dictating anything to us. They're saying, you, look, you guys don't need us whatsoever, you can go ahead with this plan on your own. We're just not going to pay you out of, you know, the reimbursement, the maximum reimbursement money. If you're gonna decide that you wanna spend more on this project, we won't reimburse you as much. I mean, I think that's, that's fair, fairly reasonable. I think that anytime you've spoken, anytime I've spoken to them and asked them to come to meetings, to answer my questions, they've been very responsive and receptive. And I've actually had a lot of good communication with them. And I don't think that's just a personal thing, I think that's if you reach out to them directly. So I haven't gotten responses from many people that I'd like to, so I reach out to RIDE. And I don't, I mean, that, again, you and I probably differ on that, but that's your opinion and this is my opinion.
Yeah, I, I try to usually go through the administration and talk to them.
I don't get answers sometimes, so I have to go, sometimes I go directly to people.
Yep, I think the other piece of it too is, you know, for the, the thirty-five to forty percent RIDE reimbursement on allowable projects, I do feel like we were pretty clear that not all of the projects and not all of the building for the middle school was going to be reimbursed. And I think we obviously all wanna maximize it and get as much money, as much that we can out of this bond. But I think we never thought that the, we knew that it was the allowable projects only and the allowable pieces of the project with a thirty-five percent reimbursement. So that's another piece that I think is important because that's what we're talking about is trying to increase our allowable projects, not that we're at a deficit of what we had originally.
Right, and we were, we were told that the capital improvement projects, those projects will get thirty-five percent on the total cost. The middle school building will get thirty-five percent on the allowable cost based on the five ninety-two per square foot of the building, the num, and the number of students in the building and the programs that would be in.
Which is what we thought headed into it.
Yeah, which we, yeah.
And what we're trying to do is kinda maximize that by making these design changes and looking at the enrollment, maximize the amount of that thirty-five percent that we'll get back.
But if we just said, you know what, thank you for your input, we like our plan, what would happen? We would be back to what we were doing.
Well, I think that's what Dr. Duba's gonna present to us, with the different options and the financial impact. So option one, I think, is that, right?
So option one is?
No, sorry, option two is that, right?
No, it's not, none of them are on here.
No, option, option one is the current submission where we increase the enrollment. They told us that was one strategy to use, is increase the enrollment.
Like, our original?
So we know, so no, I'm sorry, excuse me, in stage two, we know what option negative one is, like, which is?
So the, the submission, the submission from September, right? That was the submission with the four hundred students and that's where they said that we were, it was about twenty-six million dollars that we're not going to get the thirty-five percent reimbursement. And that's why we went back to increase the enrollment. Now we've increased the enrollment and we're changing the design and looking at adding another educational program to see what that will do to cost and reimbursement.
So as far as next steps?
This is how, like, this is what we're doing, working with them and they're trying to, you know, they, they are giving us feedback in the idea, the other idea, you know, re, I can't say new ideas, but re-looking at some of the ideas that were discussed before to look at how we can maximize that means.
So when, when you come back with this, can you make it five options and put the original one that we submitted on here also?
Yes.
For like the cost comparison?
Yeah.
Yep, I think the other piece of it too is, is going back to like the educational piece of what we're doing. You know, like, moving five hundred and twenty-five students to Wickford would have an, an impact on Davisville and then could have impacts on teens, educational thing, you know, like, we know, we know that because we've talked through this for years. And so I think, you know, of course, we wanna make the most, the best financial decision, but also, like, we put forward a bond to support the decision that we are making. And I think the students and the education pieces have to come first. Like, I don't think, I don't personally want us to make building concessions that are not gonna be in the best interest of students. And so I think that, to me, like, the money, of course, is important and I want us to get as much as we possibly could back. But also, like, I think we have to still think about what we're doing for students and long-term for our community.
Right, and I think, you know, when the change was made from five through eight to six through eight, like, that was an educational programming change that you thought was in the best interest of the district from an education standpoint, right? And so that was a shift for a reason, right?
And not, not including the pre-K was due to the concerns from the community.
Right.
And the feedback that we received there, and, you know, so it's, it's, again, and, and we could always, you know, I'm always willing to re-look at things and re-circle back, but it's not like we did not vet. Like, we had, we looked at designs that had a pre-K at a middle school.
Right.
I wanna ask about the master plan. Mr. Maznadi, you were there. Can you remind me, what, now granted, there were what, thirty participants from the community? What was the master plan, the best option for, was it preschool and six through eight?
Consolidated middle school, but.
It was a consolidated middle school. I recall it being six through eight, consolidated.
Was it with the preschool, I know, Pam, where's Pam? Okay.
I don't know.
No, it did not have a preschool.
That was not the decision.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to.
No, you can look at the, the dot grid and you can see.
I think the thing with that thing too is you open it up to the community to participate. Whether or not the community participated, like, it's before my time. I do think that the person that wrote this report, who now works at RIDE and is reviewing our application, like, was most certainly qualified to put forward this report. And I think the information and the data in it is, like, it stands. And I think the only reason I brought that up is things obviously have evolved and changed since the facility master plan has been done. But I just wanted to note that it's not that we are throwing, like, spaghetti at the wall with new ideas. Like, these are ideas that are circling back that came from the same person that they are circling back from. That's all I was trying to say is that, you know, I'm not surprised that these were her suggestions because they were her suggestions originally. Okay, so as far as this particular item, which we most certainly can talk about under our blanket, whatever, if we need to circle back on it, like, the Roberts rules, I mean, you know, is, but there's no action needed today, right? This is. to me, you know, is, but there's no action needed today, right? This is purely update and.
Updating, giving a nation.
Next steps.
The demographic study is.
So is there anything else, I guess, that we want the administration and team to look at and/or the building advisory committee?
From a timing standpoint though, to the point raised earlier today, you have your meeting on the 24th.
Do the 24th and.
The information is due to RIDE on the, in our meeting is on the.
Yes, so we should.
We knew that.
Have a meeting prior to the 5th.
So I don't think we can discuss it tonight because it's not on the agenda, but.
Most certainly not. Yeah, that was on my radar.
Okay.
Is this in a public agenda packet?
That is not, I just put that together before. Well, I will, what I'll do is I have a meeting tomorrow with Perkins and I will see what I can get them to update and then share that out. I'll put it on the, we can, can we update it to the agenda after tonight? Yeah, what I'll do is I'll post it on the school facilities.
I would ask that you put a very big caveat about, like, it needs a header, if you will. Not even draft, but like just explaining, like, I don't, people, I don't want people to be like, oh, like, what is happening? Why are these options on the table? I thought we already voted on it. Like, I think we need to be really clear that the, like, why these options are being looked at at this time.
The reason why we're breaking down the options so much is so we can do a cost analysis.
Yes. No, and I think that's the right step, most certainly.
What happens to the cost of reimbursement as you change.
Yeah, because you wouldn't wanna go through all this, add a pre-K to a middle school to get a higher reimbursement rate, but then ended up spending more than what you would have originally spent on what you originally were hoping to do.
Finding out that the reimbursement is about the same.
Yeah, like, that's, that is not the one. So I think it, I completely support, like, what you're thinking about as far as the next steps. I just think making sure to make that clear to folks. And I do agree with Jen's point of, of when we do see it having that, what, what we currently put forward with the stage two application would be important. Any other questions, comments, thoughts on B, which we most certainly can circle back to, but just trying to move us somewhere else?
Under option one, Dr. Duvu, can you just change the square footage then from 77.7?
No, that is what it is. Because, because what happened was, why, what's, why?
No, no. No, well, we had what it was.
So the original submission in September was the 79 square feet.
Okay.
Okay? When, through all of this back, I don't wanna say back, but having to look at, how do you make some changes and make things smaller and, and, you know, take away, that's how we got down to the 77.7.
Okay.
Yeah. So option one is our current submission. Option like zero would be the original one.
No, option one is not our current submission.
No, no, it is our current submission. So, so hold on.
But we didn't make an amendment to 77.7, I don't think.
Hold on. Option one will become option two.
Okay.
Okay? Option one, what I'm doing, I'm gonna redo this. Option one is going to be the six through eight middle school. It was around 79 square feet and it had 400 students. That was what was submitted in September.
And net zero.
With the net zero. Yes, with the net zero. As we were looking at how we make some changes, okay, we, the square footage was reduced by a little bit of the building because what we tried to do is condense, okay, take away some hallway space, take away, like, where can you take nooks and crannies away to bring down that square footage, right? That's where it got to 77.7 square feet.
Right, because that, option one is what we are at right now.
Option one is where we're at right now. That is, that is what we sent to RIDE with the 525 to increase the, maximize the reimbursement.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So option, we need one before.
He's gonna change it. He's gonna make option one current and then he's gonna renumber these.
When I talk to them and.
The other thing, I just wanna make two more quick points where we shift to a different part of this motion is, I, I wanted to echo one of the citizens' comments about my big concern about contingency and making sure that we have enough money to build this building. I've built buildings at, at my job. While things could happen, you can end up pulling large boulders out of the ground. That costs you a lot of money, et cetera, that are unanticipated costs. And I've been watching the news for all the different towns and districts that are having challenges with their costs. And I am, there's lots of areas that I'm willing to make concessions on, but making sure that we have contingencies for things like inflation and unexpected costs is not one that I am willing to, to do because I don't want us to get in a situation where we do not have money to complete these projects or we have to abandon doing the work at the district, wide capital improvements. Like, that is not the intent. And so I think being really careful about that is extremely important because I think I made this point in the RIDE meeting, like, what is the harm in leaving a high contingency? If you have extra money at the end, wonderful, you reallocate it. If you don't though, what do you do at that point? And, and that is a concern of mine. The other thing that I am surprised by is that net zero, like, the things that we're doing for net zero is actually being negatively looked at by RIDE because it's contributing to the overall cost of the project. And I think that that is actually fairly, like, I feel like RIDE should be taking some, when they're looking at our overall square footage cost, I feel like that is, they're encouraging us to take out things like that by putting that in the overall cost, which is disappointing to me.
I don't, so far they haven't.
No, I know they're not asking us to, but it's in, but it's in the total cost. And so by having it in the total cost, it's increasing our cost of the building and they're telling us to lower the cost. Like, I personally think it should not be factored into their equation, personally.
Partly why I've asked Perkins to give us the breakdown of the building.
Yeah.
Breakdown of the net zero and then breakdown of the site work for the athletic fields. So you can look at those three pieces separately and not have it all in one lump sum.
Correct me if I'm wrong. At the last building subcommittee, we also talked about how certain things were being budgeted into the cost of the project that could go in the fixtures and furnitures line, but we are opting not to put them there because we know the state has not raised that amount because it's a per student allocation.
It's a per student allocation for the furniture.
Right. And because they have not done those, these are parts of the building that we think are important, so we've just added it to the total cost. So that's also skewing our number a little bit. As, when they compare it to other schools and stuff.
Yeah, we have more included then.
It's just how we, but, how we did our budget versus what they're seeing from other.
You're talking about we can put the desk that I sat on in the new building? Totally fine.
The, the other thing to that point, the comparison category is really a, a very important point that you made in that building advisory committee meeting, that, that, that building in prominence that we're being compared to, the 44 million building, is literally a building. Like, there's no fields. There's no parking lot. There's no nothing. And so I think that's really important to note that, like, we are building a building with athletic fields and a parking lot. And like, that is not an apples to apples comparison.
Right. That's why I want that cost broken down because I don't feel it's being looked at in a fair way to compare us to the school in prominence.
Yeah, because I, I think that, that point has been missed when there are discussions of, yeah.
And we're not talking about the net zero, you see, the current cost for net zero, which is gonna be a savings for you two weeks later than for the environment.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on this? If, we can shift to another.
Do you, do you want to just briefly mention the demographic study? Just because that's in there. That's the, so the new demographic study from Cropper is here. We've talked with Matt Cropper to come give a presentation on this. It just wasn't available for, for meeting that, that this would have been meeting last week. So we will work on a time frame to come so you can give a presentation on this study and the forecasting and the, you know, the, how they, they come up with the calculations, their methodology. What I wanna note on here, that when you look at this study going from 25, 26 to 23, the 2034, 35 school year, we go from, excuse me, 490 students at Davisville Middle School to 506. The flow analytics study that we had went to 2031. And in 2031, Davisville Middle School was at 591 students. So there is a difference between the two studies. And they're, they're using a forecasting method. They look at birth rates, death rates, they look at population trends, neighborhood developments when they're doing this work.
What's the best practice when, when you have two different futuristic studies and they don't match? Like, do you split the difference?
We're being told that the flow analytics is outdated, right? So they're saying that that's, you need something more current. And so now we have the more current study that we're looking at and that we're using. And this was also the methodology that was suggested by RIDE for us to put in place.
So we go with this one?
For them to stay.
So we're gonna go with this one, is what I'm hearing? The other one is NEFTAS?
Well, they're saying it's outdated.
No, I'm not joking. Like, I, it really matters because I've gotten reports before that give you different data, right? Especially when you're forecasting, like, you could get two very valid things and they can say different things.
You could also look at, we could take the NESDEC data, which NESDEC has done very differently and that'll show us a different number.
Yeah.
What was the difference in, like, the change from?
So if we look at, so in 2000, so flow analytics for 2031, sweet 2031 had 591 students with Davisville Middle School. And this study has 491. So it's a difference of 100 students.
And was there a change like that in the elementary schools?
The, hold on.
230.
2031. I have Stony Lane in front of me. So Stony Lane for 2031, the forecast is 389 students and Stony Lane was 429. So, yeah, this, that is a difference, similar difference.
I'm gonna print it and then in 2031, I'm gonna look. You don't need, like.
So this is, this was submitted to RIDE as, as requested. The other document you have in here, which we've shared out, is the breakdown of all of the expenditures for the project since the original, well, not the, since the, the bond from 2023, along with a feasibility study that looked at the new versus Ranoffogood Middle School and the bond for 2024. And that's broken down by costs from Perkins Zeisman, costs from Rounds and costs from Jacobs. So you have that there. Brings us to the total of the $1.6 million that has been spent.
Any questions on any of that? I do think for the demographic studies, like, because we do have three different data sets that say three different things, like, we should establish which one is, like, we, like, I think we just have to pick one. And I know that's weird, but like, I feel like for a, for being able to plan and be able to do that, like, having three different things, or you, like, literally average them together, which I'm sure is not a statistically good idea.
Maybe we can look at, I mean, Cropper, one is the newest study that we just received that goes out further for the 10 years. I mean, I recommend we should use the.
Yeah. So I think that, I think we just have to make a decision because if not, it'll be too confusing because we're gonna be looking at imaginary swings of 100, 200, 300 students. And that's just hard to, to do some strategy around. Other thoughts, questions on the, the two things Dr. Duvu just pointed out?
So as of today, that's the one we use. Yes.
And also just kind of the, the timeline too, that, you know, we're recommending, I'm sorry, we're, we're gonna be recommending moving the preschool to Davisville Academy. And then one of the, the design options for the new middle school is putting a preschool onto the new Brookford Middle School. We just gotta note that, you know, we have a need right now regarding the preschool and the, the space at Fishing Cove, being able to increase the preschool based on the student population coming in and using that space to move programs from, from Davisville Academy into an elementary school so those students are not isolated and not integrated with the regular education programming. That's a need for now. That's a, you know, a need that we have right now. If we were to build a preschool going on the middle school, that's not gonna be until like three years out. So, you know, a decision that we're recommending today, when we get to that, to move the preschool DA, is to help right now in the three years now. And that's three years of education, three years of programming that we don't wanna just put off for another.
Three years?
Three years for these cohorts of students while, if that is a decision that's made, building that.
Ken, I think you just meandered into the other.
He did, he did, but it's okay because you have a blank.
I just wanted to say that it's a good segue.
No, but so fall, is it fall 27 or it's fall 28?
So it's, it's an 18-year timeline. We wouldn't break ground until next summer.
Okay, so next summer happens.
So next summer would be 26.
That would be 26, then 27.
So you're talking about 28.
So fall of 28. So it's three full academic years is what we're talking about. I just wanted to, the years get weird when it's school years versus regular years. And so, all right, fall of 28 would be the anticipated. Hope I'm on that. Okay. Meandering to item A, pre-K moved to Davisville Academy. We have the information from the administration. Any specific questions? Dr. Duvu or team, is there anything you wanna say before we start asking questions?
For the.
Pre-K, okay.
Well, I know Rachel and Jackie are here to go through that. So I would like to give them a chance to be able to, you know, go through the presentation and explain everything to all of you. I know there are additional questions and information that was asked for. I just, I need to grab my charger while there.
We have, we have this?
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
You ready? First of all, I wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to come. What I put together was to answer the questions that we received as well as for any additional data that people wanted. Hopefully, I addressed all the questions as best as I could. I have taken some notes from what things I've heard from the community that I also hope to add to answer. Okay. So first thing is just overall numbers. Can I just click it, Victor?
Yep, type it, should work.
Okay, thank you. So I think there was a, there was a question that came out of, what are our numbers of students with special needs in the district? So this is just an overview that I also, because they always use this coding, I added what each one of the disability labels represent.
Sorry, one second, Rachel. In the packet, it's links. So we can't, the public and we can't see any, any of the links?
I opened it, sent it to us.
You have it, the public can't see it, right?
No, I made it a public link.
But you only sent that to us because, like, but like the, in the packet, nobody else can see it.
Nobody else can see it, is what I'm saying.
So I did share them as a public.
No, we're fine. Committee, committee fine.
Yes, okay. I get it. I got you.
Community not fine, so we need to update.
Yeah. So it went out to the community as a PDF.
Yes, but in the packet, like, the links aren't clickable, so.
You can't click on it. So if somebody tried to follow along at home, they cannot, is what I was saying.
So sorry about that. So there is a PDF, but the links, I made, did make pub, public links. So when it's on PDF, whatever that is, they should be able to click on the links or we can add all the attachments. So these, these are our numbers of students who have been found eligible for special needs from years 2019 to now. So that, as you can tell, there is, has been an increase. Our original enrollment from 2019 was 534 students out of 4,214 that were enrolled, which was 13% of students with special needs. We are now at a total of 647 students out of a total enrollment of 4,025, which is a percentage of 16%. However, there's a couple of factors that you might need to know. Since that time, we have been now educating kids up to the age of 22 or prior to mentally educated kids up to 21. You'll also notice certain categories have higher levels of, of students. For instance, students who are being found identified on the autism spectrum is significantly increased. The other ones are things like intellectual disability has gone up and down. Multiple disabilities has gone up. Those are students with intellectual disabilities and additional things on top of that. Speech has really stayed the same. Learning disability has stayed about the same. Orthopedic impairment has actually gone down. Emotional disability has gone up slightly as well as otherwise held in there. So there's a lot of reasons for these numbers. First of all, everyone's seeing an increase across the nation. I would have expected to see the increase more in learning disability, but really for us, it's more the, the organic brain difficulties, things like autism spectrum disorders and things along those lines. Are there any questions about this population number? And we are educating kids longer, an additional year. It's only a handful of students, but is that. The other, the other thing that changed in this time period too, starting in 2016, I believe is the first year, is that if the students in foster care are placed here in North Kingstown, this is considered to be their school of origin and we continue to educate them in this district even if they move to another district. So under ESA, we educate kids in foster care here. There is an ESA meeting that happens with the state and a termination is made. Most often, they stay within the school of origin for here. And they could be living here, they could be living in Newport, and we're still transporting them here to, to get their schooling. So that's also something different that does pop up our numbers just a wee bit. Okay. How do I go back? Thank you. All right. There's some questions about preschool numbers. So this is our current, this was just updated. We originally submitted back in February, but since then, it's increased. So this is just talking about our different programmings. We have three-year-old Bright Start Beginnings Program. That's a half-day Monday through Thursday morning program. Those are students that need a lot of direct instruction. The term that other people might use is self-contained. I don't like that term, so we, I tend to use the word direct instruction. So we mean that they need a lot of intense support. We have a four-year-old Bright Beginning Program also. This is more of an all-day program where the students attend school Monday through Monday through Thursday all day and half-day on Friday in the afternoon. The morning of The morning of Fridays is for our teachers to get their planning time, so they have time to do what they need to do. Then we have integrated three-year-old programs, and we have four-year-old integrated classrooms and programs. So what I wanna say about numbers is the numbers haven't increased. So people have heard me talk about twenty-two kids, thirty kids that we're concerned about. The numbers of kids haven't really, haven't really increased, it's the intensity of need that has increased. So just to give you an idea, right now, we're working with about eight or so families of students who are in foster care systems. We have six or seven families that are under unstable housing. We have students with significant needs, we've done at least five, maybe six clinical evaluations this year to identify that. So we're not talking about what we saw even three, four, five years ago. We're talking about kids with much more significant needs and supports that are required for that. I think there's also a question about the lottery. So, all right, so the applications on Lottery Day in March of last year, there was forty-four for three-year-olds, forty-four applicants for three-year-olds and forty-one for four-year-olds. However, if they're in the three-year-old program, they're allowed to come to the four-year-old program, so twenty-eight of those were returning students. Between, we don't close the lottery really till December, the lottery closes, things are chosen, but then if other people apply, we do allow them, we take those applications up to December. So we had additional fifteen for three-year-olds and twelve for four-year-olds. The applications are accepted within the lottery and then withdrawn by parents by, by the beginning of the school year before September fifth. We had fifteen three-year-olds and twenty-four four-year-olds who withdrew from the program prior to the start.
Any questions? I just wanna say, Rachel, too, I was able to fill those spots.
Jackie, Jackie, if you're gonna talk, you have to come up to the microphone, please.
Jackie, so what Jackie just said was that she was able to fill the spots that were, were left vacant by the parents withdrawing. So we didn't leave them open, we just filled them with other students on the waitlist.
Yeah, so as, as the lottery is accepted, we get feedback from parents, they pay their deposit, and we enroll them for September. But then over the summer, parents drop out because their childcare needs change and whatnot, but I have a waitlist right now. So now, I have about maybe ten families that withdrew from the lottery when they were accepted, but I went to the waitlist and I'm getting them to enroll. So they're always filled until I have no spots left. But we've, the last two, three years, I've had a waitlist to go to, to fill those spots if they withdrew.
Jackie, could you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Jackie DiLorenzo, I'm the early childhood supervisor at Fishing Cove for the preschool program.
Thank you.
How many students, Jackie, are left on the waitlist? So I heard you say, like, you know, like, we, like, like, when, how many never get off?
We always go through it all by December. So whatever the waitlist is right now, I just make my way through until I fill all of the spots. And typically, we've had nobody on the waitlist. Last year, we did have a few, but it, we've, we've gone through the waitlist.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie.
Um, can you go back to the original? Can you go back to the, Victor, can you bring me back to the original presentation? Thank you.
All right, so the preschool numbers, all right, moving on. There is a description of programs, I'm just gonna briefly go over this. I did add capacity numbers to here, I also added it to a spreadsheet so you can see all the programs across the district. I thought that would be a good visual. So we provide related services to, at all schools. Related services are things like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech-language therapy, adaptable, adaptive physical education, and any other services are determined by the individual education program team. These services may be provided individually, small group, integrated classrooms, or in co-treatments with other therapists. We provide the preschool inclusion classroom, we talked about that, Bright Beginnings, we've talked about. We provide resource support at all schools. This is really either a push-in or pull-out model, where students need some service time. You're usually talking about an hour or so or under of service time, kids are coming in and out within that. We have an intensive resource support, we have the K-12 and three-to-five cohorts at Forest Park, that's for district-wide students, and we had a K-12 cohort at Quineset, it's only Quineset kids at this particular time. We have positive pathways at Fishing Cove Elementary School. That is a, a program that supports, that's very structured and it supports our students with significant social-emotional challenges, that they impact their ability to participate in regular education. This was the former program that was the lower elementary program at Davisville Academy that we moved for this school year. I have to shout out, this program has been incredibly successful. It was a bit of a bump at the beginning of the school year, which would be, we anticipated. At this point, we have all of these students in such capacity are participating in their general classroom, with one student at full-time in their general classroom, and the majority of the kids in there for one-third to half of their time of their school day, being, participating with their, with their same-age peers. So that wouldn't have been possible being at DA, because they're not near same-age peers. We have the Compass Program, highly structured program for students with more significant and multiple disabilities. They receive individual direct instruction, all core content areas, this is aligned to the essential elements of the Common Core. That's what we use for our students who are also alternately assessed. They don't take the typical RICAS, they take the alternate assessment, there's specific criteria to meet for that. We have the K cohort that's at Stony Lane, and we have the one-to-two cohort at Hamilton Elementary and a three-to-five cohort at Hamilton Elementary. We have intensive resource at Wickford Middle, this is a program we added this past school year. Prior to this, our middle school continuum only had, you have the choice of resource or life skill classroom, that was it. That's not really enough to support students. These are students that are typically needing, well, the one at the middle school level is a, is a teamed approach, where the, the special educator goes with those students into the core content areas to help support them, as well as provides a resource support. So they're, they're supported throughout their day and making sure their needs are being met. Bridges stands for Building Readiness and Independence Termination for Growth and Educational Success. By the way, I did not name the programs, our staff did. I said whatever you, whatever you feel like calling them, as long as obviously appropriate. I like the idea of bridges, especially for our middle school program, makes a lot of sense. So there's two core hearts within this program. One is students who receive individualized direct instructional core content areas, think of the Compass Program but a little bit older, kids. And core two are students that are not eligible for alternate assessment, but it still may be significantly below grade level, usually two to three grade levels below. So they still need a lot of support in doing their, the core content area, they're also out in regular ed quite a bit more, things like that. Actually, both classrooms are out in regular ed for science and social studies, but may have their initial degrees of math in a specialized program, depending on the student. They all work on academics, functional life, pre-employment skills, things like that. We have intensive resource at the high school, it's called the Success Academy. This is a very similar to our intensive resource, in fact, it's very much like the intensive resource, a very teamed approach, where we have a special educator who is kind of around that cohort of students. They have flexibility in their schedule so that they're not just in their ELA and math classes, they also can be in, stop into one of their elective classes and things like that, because kids don't just struggle in their math, they also struggle in other classes. So they have a little bit of flexibility in how we write the student's program of service, their RIPs, so that they are able to provide some supports like that, which wasn't possible in the past. We have RISE at North Kingston High School, this is Reaching Independence to Support Education, it's a highly structured program. Again, you might, you might wanna think of the Bridges programs, but older. So there's a really kind of a nice visual that accidentally happened here. We have a compass that leads to the bridge, which rises to the RISE program. And then our very last program is the SAIL program, which is the Skipper's Academy for Independent Learning, and that is our transition program for our students who have obtained their high school credits but still are, receive transition services that were legally required by state federal regulation to provide up to the age of twenty-two years old. At Davisville Academy, we have a clinical day program, very highly structured, direct instruction, supports students with more significant social-emotional difficulties in a separate school building. They may be risked, students who attend this program may be at risk to be an out-of-district placement or transitioning from placement. So for instance, we may have, let's say, a high school student who is transitioning from a hospitalization, a long, a long-term hospitalization, and it's the middle of April, and being plucked back into the high school in the middle of the semester, when they haven't been there for the entire year, is probably not the best plan. So we create a different support plan for them. They don't necessarily have to be in special ed, the majority of our kids are in special ed. There's also an opportunity to work on for our students who are seventeen with two credits, takes twenty-three credits to graduate. They have two or three point five. So we're working with them on obtaining a GED with lots of support, with our core content area teachers, as well as looking for job placements, so having them get some work experiences. Instead of, in the past, what was happening is the students were coming to school, but they didn't really have, there was nothing they were obtaining from school, so that we had a higher level of behavior that we don't see anymore, once we started creating this type of a system. Because the kids understand they are earning something, they're not just sitting there with nothing, earning nothing. There's not, not a reason to come, or there's not a reason to stay, or it's much more entertaining to create a, you know, stir. There's been some controversy about Davisville Academy, I know there's a history here, prior to myself and Joe Renzi coming on board. Joe has done a phenomenal job, as well as the team, very highly dedicated teachers. I know they were in the news in the past for too many physical restraints and things like that. I'm very happy to report that we've only had one this entire school year, and that was after over two hours of waiting and the student was being self-injurious, so we had to intervene. So these students are not what people imagine, like the police coming in, or that they are, you know, constantly fighting. That's not what you'd see, it's actually quite quiet, that's where my office is. So it's very quiet, most of the time, I'm not saying they're perfect, they have their moments, but it's a very nice environment. And then we have SAIL, which already said is our Skipper's Academy to, for independent learning, and this is really our transition services. They not only work out in our communities, things like the North Kingston Free Library, Dave's Market, Savers, all sorts of other places, but they also run a school-wide puppy stand, and we provide, again, those community opportunities for them. So this is essential to continue a service in the district. What I'm proposing for next year, oh, I forgot to say, they also do community trips and things like that with that program. You might see our van going around, that's what the kids are doing. They also make, they make Play-Doh for the preschool, which is really kinda neat. Some things that we propose for changes, we would like to, if we can move, if the proposal to move the preschool to DA is approved, we would add an advanced behavior analysis clinic. This is a clinic that would not be, it'd be a nominal rent charge by us, but they would receive a space as well as heat and light in order to provide AVA services, advanced behavior analysis services, right in district. Many of our families are qualified through this for their, through their insurance or through their Katie Beckett Medicaid insurance, but they're unable to obtain the services for a couple of reasons. One, there's not a lot, not enough providers, not enough spots. If they can get a spot, they often, it's often at an inopportune time, or our families have a hard time transitioning, they have kids that, they don't have the, the appropriate transportation to get them there. So by providing, if we're able to do this and provide it, then they have the opportunity, especially for like our three and four-year-olds, to be there half a day and then with us the other half of the day, and we can create a full-day, much more intense program. Most of the students that qualify for this service have pretty significant autism spectrum disorders, developmental disabilities, intellectual disabilities, they need a lot of support. And this is a way for us to get much more service, much more intense service, without us having to add additional teachers, therapists, and, you know, registered behavior techs and all these other pieces of implements. We also are proposing that we need a Positive Pathways K program. If, again, if we can move the preschool to DA, this would go to Fishing Cove. So we would add to the continuum, we already have one Positive Pathways program there, we don't have a per se K program, but the need of our preschool kids coming up is intense, that's where the twenty-eight, thirty kids I've talked about and needing many options for our, our teams to consider, for, to provide appropriate placements. Just to give you an idea, we do have some of our kiddos who are four years old who are really performing at the twenty-four month, thirty-six month level. And to have them go into kindergarten classroom, even with a tremendous amount of support, is completely, in my opinion, inappropriate. Completely inappropriate. So we need to provide intense services for them, and we need options of which to do so for our teams to consider. And this would be one of those options. We do have a consulting neuropsychologist, we also have burn-certified behavior analysis that work and consult with this program to help identify what kids would be most appropriate for this. We also would like to continue the intensive resource program at Wickford Middle. This year, it was only sixth graders, they obviously are moving up to seventh grade. We actually have an eighth grader that could really utilize this service. So we'd have a sixth-grade cohort and then a seventh, eighth-grade cohort. Doesn't mean they're in the same room, or in the same, not, not, eighth graders have to be in seventh grade, they just would support the students in seventh and eighth grade.
Rachel, if I could just interrupt, I just want everyone to know that your presentation and the links are now up on the, on the school department website under the live feed, so people can access it. And the links are open.
I also, I also wanna say, I, I know there's been, there's been some interesting information out there. This proposed plan has been, this proposed plan since January. I have not changed this proposal at all, actually, in that amount of time. And you might wonder, where does a proposal like this come from? I go to probably six to eight meetings a day across this district, I go to preschool, I go to Fishing Cove, I go to Hamilton, I go to high school. And why I'm going to those is to hear the need of students, so that I can really understand. I can't sit in my office and get that information, it's not the same as when you're sitting in the meetings and talking to families about what their students need and how we can support them. So I purposely do that, I actually do a lot of my director work, not during work, in order to make sure I'm doing those meetings to understand the need of kids. And that's how we develop programming. And then I talk to Jackie, I talk to Kendra, who's our assistant director, I talk to Giulia Fano, I talk to the high school, I talk to all these folks, principals, in order to say, listen, what do you think we need? What do you think if we did this? How about that? How can we adjust this? How can we adjust that? So how, this is how that, this kind of occurs. If you can go back to the original, please, thank you. All right, next. This is just, I'm just gonna briefly go over this, this is just a visual where I put them in a, in a, so that you can see the whole district on one, where all the programs are located. I know that, I know, Jen, that you really appreciate when you can see everything laid out, I was trying to lay it out. I really couldn't get it on one page without it being yucky, so.
At least you'd like it in Excel, but.
I don't mind this. So this is what we currently have, this just tells you where all the programs are located, okay? If you wanna pop it back, thank you. Takes a couple people to make this all work, right? And this is the proposed continuum, it just shows the additional programs. There was some comment, one of the little bit of additions, I think there was a, a comment I heard, oh, we're moving DA program to Hamilton, no, that's not ever been proposed. What I am proposing is, this year, the Compass Program at Hamilton had first and second graders in it, and then third to fifth graders. I am proposing that we have K brought back to Hamilton in case we need it. Again, I have a lot of kids to program for coming up, and we want that as an option. So if we feel as a team that the students may be more in a Compass kind of continuum, then we have the ability to place them there for K, if we need to.
Rachel, can you just clarify, in the existing space?
In the existing space, it's not a new classroom, it's just extending the grade level. Back to what it was, it's been K-12 prior to this school year. This current school year, we had a cohort of, I believe it was seven at the beginning, no, seven in June, I think it was eight by September, that's the other thing, people move, we get kids over the summer. So we start, no, we started at seven, sorry, it was six and then went to seven. So that continuum was placed all at Stony, because we didn't have space at Hamilton to put it, to put it in the same building. Now, with it staying at Stony, I'm also able to just add the grade level to Hamilton, if we need it. We may not need it, but if we do, I want that option. And then I showed the clinic, Positive Pathways K going. The other proposal is moving the DA program. Thank you. The DA program would come out of this direct instruction, three to five would also go to Fishing Cove. It'd become a Positive Pathways program. So we would have no elementary programs at DA, they'd all be at Fishing Cove. So you'd have K, one, like, one, two, three to five. There, I know there was a comment made by the public about a report that came out from two thousand, two thousand sixteen, around that time, that talked about the feasibility of moving the preschool to DA at that particular time, but the circumstances are significantly different now. We don't have as many classrooms, we don't have, we may have similar amount of number of students, but. We don't have as many classrooms, we don't have, we may have similar amount of number of students, but not as many classrooms. We've already moved one of the elementary programs out, so we don't need as much space of the building. And I'll show you what the space looks like in a little bit. So when I read through that report, almost, like, I'm guessing two-thirds of it are no longer viable, it's no longer what's happening yet, yeah.
Rachel, can you just clarify the color coding on this?
Oh, those are just new.
All right, so those are new.
And this I should have, I just wrote, saw a mistake, that should have been over Fish and Cove.
Yeah, okay, that's.
That was my error.
No, it's okay, I just wanted, like, to make sure that I was reading it right.
No, you have it right, yeah, I just noticed it now, as I was looking, of course, you know, you look at it a million times and when it's up here really big, you go, oh, man, I forgot to move that one over.
Yeah, no, it's totally fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Reading your paper and seeing.
So, in theory, direct instruction three, so three through five.
In theory, go to preschool, yeah, Fish and Cove, right. So the whole point of, if we move the preschool from Fish and Cove to DA, the huge advantages of this is they get additional space. They get space for OT and PT, I think that I heard a public comment. OT, the OT and PT space currently in Fish and Cove is in the upper area, in between the media center and a classroom, and it's a shared space. OT, PT, speech, intervention, occupational therapy office. It is a big jumble in a space about this room, but maybe even slightly smaller than this room. So they actually have, it's not a, it's not a great space to do, to do services. If we have to, we can do it, it's just not ideal. So when you're talking about classrooms opening up, by moving the five preschool classrooms out, that leaves five open spaces. The three to five classrooms already there would move into one of the preschool spaces, would you use another one for positive pathways, another one, two others for positive pathways. Colleen Lachlan would like one room to be OTPT and like a sensory space, potentially maybe moving a kindergarten classroom there, and then there'd still be another empty classroom. Does that make sense? All right, can you go back to the original, please? Thank you. So this is talking about what our current, I know there was a question about what are the current spaces, what are the capacity, you can read through. This is, these are like maximum, I would, the bright beginnings, those preschool kids, we really do try to keep it below eight, but potentially could be up to ten. There are no regulations to this, it's just what is appropriate for that level of student. Keeping in mind, if we have higher numbers of students, then we need more TAs, to support them.
Can you clarify the classroom spaces that have like the point three and point five?
Yeah, shared space. So intensive resource shares a space. Or it's a, or it's a, or it's a smaller classroom, sorry.
Okay.
It's a smaller classroom, and at Quineset, multiple people share one space. So they may have one classroom, but it's being shared by three people.
Got it.
Same thing at Hamilton, the resource teachers share a classroom. So they have a small space, which is, it's adequate, it's fine.
It's big, yeah, we saw it.
It's, yeah, it's fine, but it's just not a whole classroom. So I was trying to kind of guesstimate what those are.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Very hard for me to estimate numbers that I've been asked to do. The reason being, as I stand here now, my special numbers have already changed. We have, we have rolling enrollment, we have students who are enrolling as our three-year-olds coming in, we have kids that moved in just this week, so.
So the twenty-two, twenty-six numbers are as of when?
Twenty-two, six numbers are just an estimate, potential.
So these aren't real, these are what you think they may be?
No, this is what I currently have now, but it's not going to be what it's going to be in June.
That's okay, I just wanted to like, understand.
That's why I've been really, really careful, yes, what I have currently.
So there's no estimates, you're not basing it on historical things?
No, no.
This is literally what you know at this moment.
And like, I can't even determine some of these things, because we're making some decisions about some of these components. So it's my best, it's my best estimate at this moment, and I suspect it'll significantly change before June. Just, all right, go back to.
We're going to have to add one thing to that.
Sure.
To change. Right now, we are accepting, Mary Nelson, our child outreach coordinator, is doing child outreach screens for incoming K students, they're not passing. And so I have added multiple meetings onto my caseload to do referrals, because, you know, we have to put that through to referral. If a child doesn't pass child outreach, any portion of the screening, it has to go to referral. We do do a rescreen, and if they don't pass that, then it definitely goes to a referral. If it like blatantly stands out. So the majority of my meetings right now, I'm doing probably fourteen to sixteen meetings a week. Right now, the majority is, it's a good mix of incoming K students that I'm not even going to have in preschool.
Got it.
But they have to come, because they're still considered preschool.
And keep, when she says referrals, she means referral to special education. That means they're coming to a team to be evaluated.
So they could refer, evaluated, eligibility, possible IEP, it's four meetings for us.
For each student. And keeping in mind, right now, at Fish and Cove, it's a shared conference room space with the rest of Fish and Cove, and Jackie actually doesn't have an office, she shares a space. And we teasingly call that her roving dusk is her office.
I had to hold a meeting in the gym the other day, because the conference room was being used. So I've added a third day to my team days, so I have two full team days and one half day. Because, and it's just the time of the year, too, but this is where the increase comes from.
I also say, at this time of year, last year, you had about seventy-five, seventy-six referrals, we're at ninety-seven right now.
Ninety-nine, because I just met Mary on Monday.
Two more, ninety-nine.
Is that here anywhere?
No, so I will say that, yeah, that's a number that constantly changes, because we take them as they turn three, they have to have their, their IEPs. So it's a constant roll-in, we have kids, if you looked at the classroom in September, it looks very different now, because we've added kids over time.
Rachel, I'm just gonna move us along to what we're proposing for the move for the preschool to DA, and just give an overview to the committee.
Yep, so the proposal is to move all four preschool classrooms to DA, add therapy and service and sensory spaces, I gave you room numbers, our proposed room numbers, add early childhood director office, add early childhood conference room. We would still have one open classroom for potential future expansion. We would add, hopefully, the ABA preschool clinic. We identify students to be the IP team, I kind of explained that. And potentially renewing the Davisville Academy. And the floor plan, so there were some concerns, oh, wait a minute, you're going to have your DA kids in with preschool, but actually, the DA building is very conducive to this, because we have these wings. And what we're proposing is all DA, the current DA classrooms would move into this wing, this is currently where my offices are. These are all badged entrances, so our students are not, they're not able, well, right now, they'd be able to get through, but the store would be shifted, so they couldn't. So it's badge access here, and there's an entrance here. My offices would be in here, OFL would be here, and the rest of this would be preschool. There's a vestibule front entrance right here. They, there's an entrance to cafeteria, an auditorium over here, and there's also one over here, I don't see it on this particular thing, there's a door over here also, and these are also badged entrances. So there's badged here, and there's badged right here, and badged right here. So to get through the building, if I want to walk from my office, which is right now over here, and I want to walk all the way to the proposed room one for preschool, I would actually have to use my badge once, twice, three times. So it does keep the kids separate. We also would propose that the preschool would use the playground inside the courtyard, which is fenced, it's ideal for it. And DA's playground is actually on the outside of the building. The other thing, too, there's a question that was asked when we met with preschool parents. They asked, well, if we have our kids, because we do have D kids that walk around, would they be visible to the students? And they wouldn't, because these preschool classrooms look into the courtyard, their classrooms look out, and they do look out to outside of the building. So that wouldn't, there wouldn't, shouldn't be any conflict there.
On that map, are there any shared spaces?
The only thing that would be shared would be the nurse's clinic and the cafeteria. Again, though, it's badged here, and it's badged here.
That's the only one, Rachel, that, like, I am a hundred percent down. I, I think that after, I so appreciate being able to tour the different buildings, because it really helped me see and understand it.
Visualizing it.
And also think about it as a parent, and, you know, Caroline went through the program and like thinking about it. The one piece that I would love for us to explore, if it is approved, is the nurse, because I'm thinking about a high school student and a three-year-old, both needing to go to the nurse at the same time. And just that, that shared space, to me, seems like we might need to, to look at that.
I think that could be tweaked, and there's options for that. And sometimes the nurse also goes to them, so it's not always them going to the nurse.
Yeah, I just think that that's.
I think there's way to work on that, right?
The gym, I understand how it would be utilized in cafeteria, like, but that was the one that I, I think we just really need to think about.
I can completely see that, and we could certainly think of a plan for how that would work. It would be nice to use the nurse, I mean, right now, we have twenty-nine, soon to be thirty students at DA, and there's one nurse, now the nurse could increase their capacity to meet the other kids. At the same time, we get the additional classrooms at preschool to add additional program. Also, I want to be very clear that I'm not developing a program like, if I build it, they will come type of philosophy. I'm telling you, they are here, and I need to do something. So I'm incredibly anxious, I think is the word, a little bit anxious on how we're going to meet the needs. Even with this proposal, I'm still a little bit anxious of making sure that we're meeting all the needs of kids, that we're providing the appropriate support, that we have the right staff in place, that we have the right support staff to staff, and making sure all these pieces work for our kids. As well as providing those really nice inclusion opportunities, that we're having some really nice gains for our kids.
So the request, then, is that we, the request is that this proposal be accepted by the school committee to move the preschool programs from Fish and Cove to Davisville Academy for the school year twenty-five, twenty-six, and the positive pathway programs would go to Fish and Cove for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So I have two comments and a question. Thank you so much for putting that continuum together, because that clicked it all in my head. And thank you for taking the time to tour the three buildings for me, because seeing everything, especially Fish and Cove, that space upstairs, like, oh, my goodness. So that was, that was very, that helped a lot, and that actually brought me around on my decision, like, completely. But my concern now, like, and I am a yes, it really did swing me. My concern is with the budget. And I think some of the money, Leslie, like, that we had in the budget for this is now gone. So walk me through the finances on that again, please.
Can I add just one comment before that? I also think we should really, I was thinking about this quite a bit while people were presenting. I think we have to be really, really cognizant of the fact that if I don't provide the appropriate support, that we have a higher likelihood of placing kids out in district placements. And I really need to talk about that, because there's two big problems with that. One, there's not very many right now, and the price ranges from sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year prior to the transportation. So when you think about one student going out, that's a heavy, has a lot, a lot of need, that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars placement.
But we're not changing any of our programming, so that is, although, and I'm a yes on this, I really thought a lot about it, but like, that's not.
No, yeah, it is, because if I, if we don't have the space, I can't add positive pathways K, which is a big deal.
Yeah.
And I don't think it'd be appropriate to have it at DA, completely separate like that. I really would not recommend that, I don't think that's appropriate for students.
We are reducing Stony, we had an extra K at Stony this year, though, that I don't think we might, like, we might have space there. And again, I mean, yes, I just want to be really like with parents about.
So if we were to.
Do you have five Ks here, again?
No, well, so, let me clarify, that we wouldn't have an enclosed space to put that program.
Okay, that's.
And so, no, I don't believe we'll have five Ks at Stony. Looking at the number of K students, the next year, we'll have a need for those people somewhere, but it doesn't give a enclosed space at Stony Lane for that program.
I would imagine, though, in a world, that if that happened, and again, I'm a yes, but like, if, if we needed to put a K somewhere and we did not approve this plan, I would imagine we would find a place to put it versus sending all of those students out of district.
No, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be.
That's not an apples-to-apples budget comparison.
And I'm not saying that we're going to send all the K, I'm just talking about even if one or two go out, which could even happen with all of our support. But I would also say that having that K space at Stony will allow the current Compass K program, which is in a very small space, to be in a more typical-sized classroom, which also allows us to support at least two more students within that space. Because right now, I'm very limited, because it's too small of a space with the adults also come with the kids. Yeah, so I, I didn't mean to imply, they would all be placed out, no, that's not at all what would happen, but we run the risk of not providing much more intense needs when they're very young, when it meets the most amount of impact of having more of those options as the kids get older. So it's just something, something to think about.
And also, too, I'll just add, before, just to, before we move into Leslie, that cost for that, out of district for that one student would be the cost for the teacher of a program of these students. So you've got to think about that cost and the impact of it. Keeping it in district, you're, you're providing more for more students. Leslie, can you just update us on the budget, so we know?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Does this proposal allow us to have anyone currently out of district come back to district?
We've already placed, we've already had several kids move back to district. We've had, we've had several kids move from DA back to their neighbor's kid. We've had kids come back from district, what, was that?
It doesn't facilitate more of an opportunity to have more out of district?
Not necessarily K, because those are kids we currently have. But I will say, we've also prevented multiple students who came in, moved into district that were in out-of-district placements to not be in out-of-district placements. They actually came to DA, or they came to our positive pathways program. We had multiple kids. Off the top of my head, I can think of four, but I think there's a couple more out there. There was at least four that were already in out-of-district placements, but we didn't have to put them in there or keep them there. We were able to transition them back with a plan, because we had the programs to support them. I strongly believe our kids belong in the, our community, this is where they're best met. When I have three to four students, it's more cost-effective to create our own program than to place them out.
Rachel, regarding the placement, I have a question about, I know the plan for twenty-six, twenty-seven is to reintegrate the middle schoolers.
I would like to move the middle school from DA to DMS.
And then my question is, what is the long-term plan, or can you do something like that for the high school?
So I sus, this is what I, if I had to predict, what you're asking me to predict, I believe we're always going to need some type of high school program. May not be two classes, which it is now, but I do think we're going to need at least one as a step-down, step-up program. In other words, kids at risk for being placed out, or kids at risk for coming back from placements. I think we may always need at least one space for that, but I do believe we could take one of the other high school programs and place it at the high school. I did not put that in a proposal for not this school year, but next school year, but it's certainly up for discussion. There's some components that we have to think about, like space, location, because some of the reasons why kids are at the DA program is not because of their, necessarily their behavior, it, it's really the symptomology of their disability, and that huge school was too overwhelming for them, and they couldn't handle that, the pacing was too, too much. So by being a DA, we can allow them more breaks, they can go outside. If you ever see, we sometimes have a student doing parkour outside, and he's able to come back in and get right back on, on task, that, that you could not do in a big school. So I suspect there may always be that need for at least one program, or that GD pathway type thing, or something along those lines. But I would like a program in the high school.
Is it ever something that you would consider, I know the middle school is not super much smaller, but like then, the high school, but would you ever consider putting a classroom, or setting aside a classroom in the new Wickford Middle School build, for, so that you remove basically everyone but the preschool? You know, in other words, can we keep DA at some point just a preschool? Is that an option?
Yeah, I think that's an option. I just think a separate space. Now, this program used to be in the D building, when I was here before, when I was the director of the core, we put the program in the D building, because then the kids had the access to be able to go up to the high school to take classes, which is, I think, incredibly important. Again, we also had the space so that they couldn't do that, or they needed the pacing, or they needed a break, they had the space to do that. So it was sort of the best of both worlds. We don't really have that option right now. I don't know if there's an option in the future for something like that, but could it be moved into somewhere else? Absolutely, I just think they might need, we might need that. I suspect we will, just based on what I'm seeing. And the level of, you know.
Leslie? And I will keep this just to the budget for the preschool, to answer your question. So in our initial discussions, we had talked about the fifty thousand dollars that was allocated to the central office relocation. We have that money in fiscal twenty-five budget, we also had it in fiscal twenty-six budget. So based on Mr. Murphy's overview of what the cost would be, those two amounts would cover the majority of what needed to be done, and there was the addition of the playground. And based on documents that you had sent, I think from twenty-twenty-one, on what is a set aside for playgrounds with our fund balance, based on if we have a surplus, there was twenty-five thousand, that is from the twenty-one document. And then we had approved at the time to allocate an additional twenty-five thousand to that playground area, and that would cover the full cost for the move. So fifty from this year, fifty from next, from, from the operating budget. And then at the eleventh hour, prior to approval, we removed the fifty thousand dollars out of the budget and moved it to fund balance. So we kept it, we took it out of operating and put it to, there was a list of items that we had taken out and said, these are, these are capital items, these are things that can fall and we can pay with fund balance. So to get the number where we needed to for our budget, it's, so it's still there, it's just.
So the fifty that's in the budget for admin is not allocated for this?
So I'm glad that you brought that up, because in this, in the research, after going through the budget line by line with trying to find cuts for the most recent thing, I believe, I believe. believe, I believe, I had it in there twice. So I, we have fifty thousand in there. I originally had it in the admin budget, then I thought that we needed to keep furniture and fixtures and it all...
We don't believe. We checked it.
No, I know. I know it's in there twice. I checked it seventeen times.
That's what she was looking for. That's where, she was clarifying that it was doubled.
It is doubled in there, and I had it pulled out again for the other...
I assume that's what you're looking for.
Yes, I'm sorry. If I know that...
So what's the total cost? Not, I understand the fiscal year breaks, but what's the total cost?
Hundred and fifty thousand is allocated toward the project.
But it's coming out of the...
Two different.
The fund balance, not from the operating budget?
Every, fifty thousand is coming from this operating budget in twenty-five. The rest is coming out of, in the same light line item of furniture and fixtures for administrative move because the original, we had budgeted to move this year into DA. And then when we knew that that probably wasn't going to happen, that money is still allocated. And in my projections later on...
But it's not from the line that Ken's proposing comes out? That's, that's where I'm going with this.
No, it's not.
Can I just add too? We also put in the CRP amendment for this year, money for the furniture for these classrooms if needed.
The only thing I was concerned about was that, was that, yeah.
To do that.
Did we anticipate any costs for, when we took the tour of the buildings, there's a lot of stuff in the buildings, and so did we put in any costs as for like, storage units or removal of those items? No, so there could be some...
Chris had it in his breakout.
Yeah, I was saying Kenny's fiscal breakout, yeah.
I think the very, very first breakout he had.
Chris, come to the mic.
Yeah, it was in the breakout.
The least desirable option is to store things in those storage units.
I'm going vehemently opposed storing anything.
Yeah, I would agree. A lot of the stuff that we all saw on that day can go, can go. It's fifty, sixty-year-old furniture that has served its purpose, and it owes this district nothing more.
So that...
Can we also look at, like, I mean, I know some...
We wouldn't actually look at that.
No, 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 but I mean, some, I know some records we have to keep, but look, just look at the retention policy for anything that we have, because there's a lot of textbooks, there's a lot of financial records, there's a lot of other things that we saw back to, like, the thirties, you know? It's like, why would we have this?
I've had conversations about those stored textbooks, and almost everything in that room can be recycled or donated and shipped elsewhere for the benefit of others.
So we don't anticipate a large fiscal impact of doing that part of it?
No. Matter of fact, we have the auction site, that we're going to put a lot of, sort of, stuff up for auction. And I have seen, I've done this before, and seen people come in and sweep it all up for a couple hundred bucks. You know, nothing major, but there is the opportunity.
Yeah, we don't want to...
And also, we can, if it doesn't go, we have the option to recycle them out.
I have two other budget questions.
About the pre-K?
Yes, about the pre-K. We, we, like, at the end of our budget process, we were doing, like, some ins and outs when we were dealing with the, the pre-K. The additional positive pathway K teacher, is that teacher in our budget?
Yes.
Yes, that's one of the special educators. I had to...
At Fish and Cove?
Yes.
Okay. And the additional intensive resource support at Woodford Middle School?
Yes. And then we had three TA positions.
Yes, three TA.
Like, for real, for real, a line item and not kind of...
They are for real, for real, a line item. So the, I, in order to make it that easy for us to take in and take out based on conversations that we were having with the budget, but they are added in the budget that we approved, and they are there as part of the salary and all of their appropriate areas.
Yeah, I, I knew we, I thought we added them, but I couldn't remember if we added them or if we kind of, like...
No, they're, they are, they are in there.
Okay. And then my last question, which relates to the pre-K, Rachel, where did you go? About your donation. So I saw up there that we have the Compass K at Stony this year. Have we considered moving the Compass program at Hamilton to another building?
No.
Why not?
There's no space for it.
No space anywhere?
Nope.
Not equipped?
The quit does some half rooms of closed, need a new wall.
Stony doesn't have enclosed classrooms either, does it?
They, so we only have one program, and we restructured a room for that one program.
Could we not do that equipped?
Don't, we would not have enough space where we could do that. We would take something away.
No, you can't do it.
Yeah.
No, there's not, there's not really an...
We don't, we don't have the space for the program plus the sensory therapy space. We'd have to add, we'd have to add additional walls to that.
Well, when we put walls in per our plans...
That's why we have, that's why we have it.
The potential's down the line.
We don't, and if we go to another school, will we take the space away from, like, interventionist resource teachers that already share a space in order to make that sense from what spaces we have? Not, not, from what spaces that are there that we can move people out of.
Any other questions regarding pre-K?
I have a question about, are you going to have to retrofit any, I just, I am just very concerned about the numbers, the actual financial impact. I saw the numbers for this year, or upcoming year, I see the numbers for the next year, but going forward after that, or even just to get the little preschoolers in there, are we going to have to change things?
Very minor things. I was in preschool in the past. So there's a couple of things why we can't just, so there's already bathrooms in there that are the right size. So there's a lot of rules around preschool. There's a lot of things around how to obtain your bright stars, stars, regarding space, learning environment, bathrooms, et cetera. And that space is already ready for it. It also has storage. What we're really missing in our preschool and where we lost from being a five-star bright star program was one point, and that was learning environment because there's too much stuff and they had nowhere to put it. So by moving to, to DA, we actually have a whole storage for them. Regarding retention of records, we definitely know the rules in specialized, and all those filing cabinets are all required, retained records. They're required to keep them. Yeah, the other, yeah, there's, there's a lot of...
We were talking about the non-specialized.
And we have, and we have to have them, and they have to have access to them because anyone can request those records. We have people who are thirty years old, well, twenty-five years old, asking for records, and we have to pull them. So I just, that retention. And then the other little thing about, it may seem easy, okay, let's just add positive pathways K, let's put it over here. By separating them from the other positive pathways programs, I'm going to need additional staff because right now, we plan to have them work as a team. If I now have them separate and more isolated, they, they need the additional training and additional support. I'm just saying, it's not ideal to do it that way.
Any other questions regarding pre-K?
Is there a potential for just a comment I'd like to make prior to the vote? Because I don't want to just get to the vote.
Well, we're not voting. We have many other items in this mega. I'm not rushing anything. I'm just trying to move us along. So...
I know you still have C, right?
We still have C and D as part of our mega, no?
You're in a mega motion right now?
Yeah. We have to vote separately. We're not, we're discussing all of the things before we vote. I know, I made the face too, an hour ago. Okay. C, D, where would we like to go next?
So why don't we do C before we do D? Right? Because that is the impact for the FY twenty-six budget. So Leslie?
I'm calling.
You're up.
There's a typo. Do we both say, can we say to our listeners?
I don't even know if I'm going to need that.
Is it FY twenty-five?
Isn't, aren't we, so C be twenty-five?
If we are, you can't...
Oh, I am well aware.
What is the question?
So on the agenda, it says impact items FY twenty-six budget. That's next year. Then item D says budget FY twenty-six. That's also next year. So we cannot talk about twenty-five right now.
Correct.
There's, so one of the documents has both on it, so I can just leave half of it off?
Andrew?
As long as you're addressing one of the FY twenty-six.
Yeah, then, then that's fine. It should have just said budget impacts. So, I apologize.
No worries.
So I'll just talk about the top half. Well, there's budget fiscal twenty-six implications in, I'll just leave the twenty-five part out. No, I can't. How do I deal with that?
You say next year, this won't be the same.
But no, we're talking about twenty-six.
So, so that, I had to reference...
FY twenty-five and twenty-six.
But the, I, the agenda says twenty-six.
Yes, I feel like we're on that, like, round first. Yes, that's the problem. Is that it doesn't pay twenty-five? So Leslie can't talk about...
So I had to put twenty-five in to make twenty-six make sense.
But you can talk about twenty-six.
So I'll just talk about the twenty-six, and if I say something wrong, please just stop. So I will do my best.
Focus on twenty-six.
Okay, so if we're just talking about the first one, for fiscal twenty-six, two pieces of information were received post-school committee approval of the budget. The first was we received the actual health and dental rates from the trust, and we had, in our budget, proposed a five percent increase is what we were anticipating. This was something that was also done in discussion with the town. They also proposed five percent on there. We were in agreement that, after our conversations with the trust, that that should fall in line with what we were anticipating. However, the actual renewals came in at more than double. So our health came in at ten point one-six, and our dental came in at six point two-nine. So obviously, as soon as this came in, it needed to be presented here in this forum to the school committee because it has an impact on the budget that was approved. So the fiscal...
Sorry, ten point one-six, then what was the second one?
Six point two-nine.
Thank you. And we had budgeted for five.
Five percent in both. So the estimated fiscal impact, if we're looking at the numbers that were currently in the budget that was approved in February, and we're looking at that moment in time based on the employees in that budget, approximately a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar increase from what was in the budget, not overall. That is in addition to what we had already, any increase we had. And...
Leslie, for that, that is the same that the town budgeted for because we had a discussion with the town.
Correct. So they also budgeted...
When we did our budget, we...
So theirs is also...
Correct.
And that was...
And nothing has been approved or anything, like, we're, we obviously did ours, but that is at the town currently for that. Like, they have not approved or done anything with that yet.
Correct, correct. And we have gone back to trust to ask, are these rates negotiable? Is there anything that we can do about it? And the response that we've received is, they are not negotiable. The rates are what they are, and we need to plan accordingly.
So are we bound to just one, how is that possible? Like, that's unacceptable.
It is, quite frankly, it is unacceptable, and we are not the only district facing rates that are this high, and other districts are in the same situation that we are, where we are, you know, this deep into our budget process and getting double-digit renewal rates that were unexpected.
Have they explained why there's a double-digit rate?
So, so we actually just received our actual working rates, like, what, an hour, an hour before this meeting? Typically, what happens is you'll get your renewal rate, your overall percentage, then you'll get your working rates, and then they'll give you an overview of how we arrived at these numbers. We have not had that overview yet. But they, they should, that is required of them, to go through and explain why the rates are what they are. It doesn't change the fact that we have to now...
Do every district in the state use the same...
The, the same...
Prevent.
So we get our interns through the trust. They are not the only, there are...
They don't have to, though.
We don't, we do not have to. There are a couple of other consortiums that exist. There's an organization called RIMIC that you can actually use if you're a self-funded organization. There's WB. I think there's one more. I don't know it off the top of my head. I could get that information for you. But we certainly don't have to use the trust. One of the things that's different about the trust is how they do their healthcare is that they're more premium-based. It's not really a premium. It's still self-funded. It's still working rates, but they bill us based on an anticipated premium amount. So we can supposedly budget better, and we all see how that worked out. So they are a little unique. I know WB also does the same model. RIMIC does not. They're entirely, you get your bill, you pay your bill. It's a one-for-one. They all function a little bit differently. So, you know, as long as we continue with the trust, we are kind of at the mercy of whatever their rates are, and when they give us those rates, there's no negotiation. With somebody like WB, they can give you what they believe your working rates should be, but you have flexibility to adjust those based on your budget. You could just end up with a surplus or a shortfall at the end, and then you roll that into the next year. So there, there are just, it's a variety of ways to do it. Certainly something that we, as a district, can investigate based on the current trajectory.
I feel like this happened last year, too.
Not this bad.
Not this bad. So last, last year, we budgeted at five percent, and it came in at six and a half percent. So my, initially, I, when I had started the budget process, I was around six and a half percent. And then again, like Dr. Duvva said, we, we had a conversation with the town, and we collectively agreed that we would go in at that number. So, but it did, it did happen last year.
All right. Other things on, that you need to inform us of?
Yes. So we also received information that impacts our fiscal twenty-six transportation line item for statewide transportation, so not the bus, not the bus contractors. This is only for statewide. And when we are looking at what our projections are, I am projecting that, based on recent numbers, we will need to add approximately two-hundred-thousand dollars to that line item. Because our fiscal twenty-six budget was based on our, you know, current year, just like the rest of the budget, and then based on how this year is going, we will need to increase it because we need to be at, at at least what we anticipate for this year going into next year. And because there is such a jump, we, we would need to add that. We need to find, it's actually two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-four-hundred dollars to be at least at or slightly above where we will anticipate ending the year.
Say it again.
Two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-four-hundred dollars.
So I'm going to round, but so since we've approved our budget, we basically count out that we're going to incur an additional four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars in expenses that we did not budget for?
Correct. And they were unanticipated, to say the least, and completely out of our control.
So what's the rationale for the increase there for the statewide?
So we based our fiscal twenty-six budget on what we were projecting where we would end the year for twenty-five, based on the numbers that have been coming in since we approved that budget. Those numbers are significantly higher.
But why?
So, you want to jump right in?
Increase in transportation services for homeless students, and it's something that's being seen statewide. RIDE is working on that. They're, they're looking at redoing, relooking at the formula and how it's calculated, as well as other funding that could possibly go back to districts in the future, not right now, but in the future years, to help support funding the cost, the transportation cost for homeless students.
That can't be all of it, though. Can we get a breakdown of, of, like, I'm not blaming on how students up two-hundred-and-seven...
No, no, but I'm not saying that is, that is...
Oh, oh, I, I, actually, if you look at your attachment, it's, the actual numbers are attached, so you can see...
There's other out-of-district...
Our, our numbers are based on the first projection. So RIDE actually gives us that projection, and they say, this is what we anticipate. So our budget number, if you look at, our statewide, it looks at the original projection number that they gave us. Then they gave us an amended projection, which was two-hundred-thousand dollars higher.
But now we're talking about the agenda item that's...
Yes, right, exactly.
But Ken, that goes to the statewide transportation commission that the state is doing, right? And that ties to the resolution that we put forward that a lot of the other districts are also...
The only other option, too, though, is, like, using statewide as a choice. Correct. Like, in theory, we have to transport the students, of course, but how we transport the students is up to us.
And that is something we're looking to, of, can we get more vans?
Yeah, I remember Mike telling me all about the vans and how the vans were going to help us move away from statewide, but we haven't done that yet.
I remember the vans, yeah.
Well, we would need, we would need to purchase additional vans, or it's something...
It's ordered. I don't know if it ever...
Oh, it did come. That van finally did come. It did came.
It's also a possibility that we can have with our...
Yeah. So there's, so this is if we went exactly the same way that we're going this year, that would be the impact. But there could be possible other avenues to find cost savings.
Yeah, that was one of the things that we had. Was an analysis for how we could move away from statewide and, like, you know, shift to using more of our own transportation and reduce the overall reliance on statewide.
And there's certainly things that we can investigate now that we have this information, but I am required to report to the school committee as soon as I find out this information that's going to impact a future budget. So this is me, reporting.
Okay, other things that need to be reported? Anything?
On that section, no.
We can move into the impact on FY twenty-six.
Do you want to lead us off on that one?
So the, the next item on here is the impact of FY twenty-six budget and proposed budget cuts to be able to make up the difference between what Leslie just discussed in addition to the proposed budget cut from the town. So there's proposed reduction in the town appropriation. There's the expenses with transportation and the increase in the renewal rates for the health and dental. And we have an attachment that shows what those costs are. So the transportation is two-hundred...
Can you back up a step because you just skimmed right over the town?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to get to it. I'm going to go through those breakdowns right now. So the statewide transportation is two-hundred-and-seven-thousand-four-hundred. The health and dental increase is two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, and the proposed reduction from the town on the town appropriation is a hundred-and-ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, which brings that total, sorry, to six-hundred-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. We also have, which, if you, you know, Leslie can't explain...
Ken, do you just want to explain? So we, we've already talked about where the top two numbers came, but does everybody know about where the town information came from? Like, like, should we tell them how we arrived, how we arrived at that number from the town?
Yeah, that would be...
Yeah, so...
So, so the, the... So, so the, the, there was a proposed cut that was brought up at, in one of the last town council meetings, and it was two weeks ago, the meeting, was it two weeks ago?
Well, it was part of the town manager's budget.
Right, I'm trying to remember when that, when that meeting was.
March eighteen.
Okay, it was.
I'm like a hundred days ago.
And, you know, there was a proposed cut to, up to the school budget of a hundred and ten thousand two forty-five.
So you take a hundred and ten plus two oh seven.
Two eighty-five and two oh seven.
Six oh two.
That comes up to the six oh two. There's also recalculations of tuitions that we would be receiving from Jamestown, for the Jamestown resident students that attend the high school, an increase of a hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, which would bring down that total number to five hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five.
And I, I just wanna explain where that number comes from, so that it makes sense. So when we did our first budget with the numbers, we had not had the negotiations with Jamestown for our new contract yet, so.
Still haven't voted on that.
No, we have not.
We have voted on it, we just have to do the numbers.
Oh, I'm all aware, just picture, we're all remembering where we are in that process.
So the numbers that I was using were based on the prior year. Based on discussions, I have run different scenarios. And based on those scenarios for the year, because again, we didn't have any point of reference for fiscal twenty-six when we were doing this initial budget, so I was just basing it on twenty-five. Based on what we think the student count would be, because we now are at a point in the year where we have a better idea of the number of students that would be in that program, not only CTE, but also incoming eighth graders and students that would be continuing, I was able to more accurately put counts to those numbers that I was using. And then based on our expenses and how the calculation for Jamestown works, I was able to use those new numbers to put in a closer and more accurate account for what we can anticipate based on how negotiations and conversations go. And that's where that one eighty-five comes from. And again, this is just a suggestion. I have said before and I will say again, I'm always hesitant because you don't ever want it over, you don't wanna inflate revenue because you just don't know. But based on information that we now have that we did not have in February, I feel comfortable with that increase. It does not have to be that high. We could go conservative and say, okay, we could take half of that if we wanted to. But I do believe there will be some extra revenue based on the new numbers that we have. So that, and that's the only place that I would even consider looking at revenue to address any of these shortfalls. I know that there are other areas where we are looking positive in terms of that revenue, but I don't feel comfortable making any of those changes, but I will defer to the committee on that. Anybody have any?
So with the information that was just provided by Leslie, I feel like, you know, as, as I said, so the town one is proposed, that is not final, like as far as what, what they had done. Obviously, we have our hearing on April, whatever, April twenty-first, Monday, it's on Monday. And then, but also, I feel like we need to be transparent with them as far as like what information we've learned now that are impacting that budget, because if we had known that information prior to us approving a budget, we would have included that information. Like, those numbers would have been in the FY twenty-six budget. Like, yeah, and so I feel like we need to communicate to the town prior to the hearing about that.
Oh, absolutely. And Ken, you know, I sent you a note after their meeting because they actually said that they expected to hear from us in regards to what our plan was for making up the shortfall for the health insurance. And so I think we absolutely need to send them a formal communication in regards to their cut and in regards to the increases that we are experiencing. So that we're not just strolling into that meeting and, you know, having a conversation with them.
Yeah, and what, what we were thinking was that having this meeting before sending that correspondence because we wanna be clear about, and Ken can't make the decisions about what. So it's a post-fiscal committee communication correspondence is what Ken and I ended up talking about.
I guess my point was we could have had the conversation at the last school committee meeting and not be sending it like the day of their meeting.
I don't, I don't think we had all of this information at the last school committee meeting because.
Or we had it, but we weren't able to get on the agenda.
No, 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 this, um, one of them came on like the twenty-first or that, that week of that meeting of the eighteen.
It was not.
And then this was the first meeting that we've had since.
We didn't know they were cutting it, so we couldn't.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, their first, yeah. And so. Is there another?
So that's, that's just the revenue piece.
Yeah.
But then, obviously, that is not enough to cover the two areas. If, taking the, the town piece.
Still four hundred.
Aside, we still have four hundred thousand dollars that we, yes, that we need to account for. So even if we were to say, we will recognize this entire one hundred and eighty-five thousand of revenue, we still have a shortfall that we need to make.
So that's what's on the.
So, so to the, the document that you have, so to the right side are very, like cursory, at least, these are suggestions. These are not saying we have to do all of these things. These are suggestions. I have gone through this budget line.
Is it in the packet?
Yes, yes.
What's it called, just so I can?
The budget proposed decrease of town appropriation, because I'm gonna propose budget cuts.
Like, I'm not crazy, right? We also got an email about it. No, I know, I can go look there too. I always try to. Is it that?
Yep.
Yeah, turn it around.
Yes, sorry.
No worries. I just wanna make sure I was looking at the right thing, and mine does not look at. Jen's colors are wildly different than my colors, and so I thought.
It should be blue.
Oh, and I look at it this way, it's red.
So, so what we, what we provided, we went, we went through.
We went line by line.
FY twenty-six budget, went through everything. And these are the suggestions that we're proposing of the cuts in order to come up with the five hundred and seventeen thousand. So, you know, we can go through that. So, you know, we start at the top with the operational, and they can cuts to catering and food. If it comes under central administration, that budget line goes towards PD. It goes towards any time that we have an event that we're doing at the school or for staff appreciation week. So we're, we're proposing cutting that budget by four thousand dollars, cutting the professional fees and dues line by two thousand one hundred and twenty, cutting the furniture and fixtures administration line of fifty thousand. This is where we look at that, and that's not the same amount that we're putting towards the DA preschool move, and then cutting ten thousand from the wellness PD. In addition, there's other staffing areas. We have a retirement at the high school of a reading specialist, so through that retirement, eliminating that position, that would be a savings of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We moved one of the interventionist positions from ESAR into operations, and that's a, the middle school math intervention position at Davison Middle School, cutting that and having to relook at the schedule and the current staffing we have to incorporate intervention time within the schedule. This next one, we are not definitely sure about, but it's something we are looking into. It's reallocating one special education teacher from the high school to be put in place for the intensive resource program at the middle school that's in the budget. So instead of hiring a teacher, being able to move someone, but that is something that Dr. Santa will be looking into next week with our special ed department chair and looking at caseloads to see if that's possible to do. We looked at part-time clerk positions and the elimination of three part-time clerk positions. One would be in the student services department. They have two and a half clerks. Quinneset, we have not filled the part-time clerk at Quinneset. That is a smaller building with smaller number, or fewer number of students compared to other elementary schools, and cutting that position, as well as the part-time clerk at Forest Park. It's another smaller school with fewer students, and cutting that position. And then the equity school belonging and engagement coordinator, which is not a required position that we have to have, and, and that's on there as well. Those, all of those cuts would add up to five hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and twenty. Put them there as a, for discussion, knowing that if we have to move forward in doing this, these are areas for us to look at.
Do some of these have benefits included and some of them don't? Like, I don't understand how the reading, high school reading specialist is one thirty-eight, but then, like.
It has to do with the staff, so it's the, so that person.
That can't, no, but then like, Sally's eighty-eight, like, that doesn't make sense.
Oh, so I will explain. It is based on a variety of things.
Okay.
And so for the reading specialist, because that's based on a retirement, a current position that is currently in the budget at full, that amount would be the salary and benefits for that individual who's retiring. So we could capitalize on the entire salary. That's the whole thing. And it's particular to that person, and it's the salary and benefits that that person has. This may include a master's degree. It could be, have longevity in there. They might have family benefits as opposed to individual.
It's literally what they make, plus benefits.
Exactly.
Got it.
For, for that person. For the interventionist position, this is where it gets a little different because that would be where you would have to have a layoff of typically the most recently hired employee, which is typically a step one or step two. So in order for that, because the person that's in that position would then move to a different position. So that salary and benefits is based on a step two with individual benefits. No, excuse me, family benefits. So that's where the eighty-seven thousand is coming from. For the reallocation of the special ed teacher, that's where, also gets a little interesting when we were talking about the positions that we added at the end. When we were talking about the intensive resource and we were talking about the Compass K, we knew that those would have to be a step-ten teacher because of the skill set that is required. So that was put in the budget as step-ten with full benefits, and then we took into account sixty thousand dollars worth of breakage. So when we're looking at the amount of money we would get by, with Dr. Santa, we would have an existing teacher on that salary. It would be moved or reallocated. So when we're looking at what we would remove, we would remove what we added to the budget. So we would remove that step-ten, but then we have to take into account thirty thousand dollars of breakage that we accounted for, for those two teachers, and that's how you get the hundred thousand, because of what we put in minus the breakage. So that is a little strange because we were using more ballpark figures when we were adding to the budget. And then the part-time clerks, again, that was just an average of what one part-time clerk would make. And then that for the equity and belonging.
Does that twelve thousand include benefits or no?
They don't get benefits. They don't have benefits. It, it includes like FICA, Medicare, and then, so it includes fringe, just not health and dental. And then equity and belonging, that is what is currently in the budget for that position.
With benefits?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, the same, I was like, there's no.
They're, they're not, no, and that's why, why, and I apologize for taking so much time to go through it, but they are very specific to those. And I will say, you know, obviously, you can see that the amount is greater than the amount that we need because these are discussion items and there's, you know, any combination. They don't have to be any of these things. We can have discussion about other options that you may have. There are things that we were currently researching. So Dr. Duvva and I are in the process of researching the substitutes because we had that conversation during the budget meetings about, are we using our building subsufficiently? Are there different ways to do it? But that's not something that, it's not research that we would have finished in time to be able to propose that because I don't have a solid number to say, sure, we can save a hundred thousand dollars. But that's certainly an area that we are investigating because we do think that we could have some savings there. There were some things and some areas that we could consider that was dependent on whether or not we moved the pre-K to DA. And so I think that those are certainly discussion items that we can have based on what the outcome of that is this evening. There are things that I have continued to look at. I will say, these are not things that I have like fully vetted with the rest of our team. I've just been constantly looking over this to come up with ideas. I'm happy to discuss those. I don't know if you even.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's.
If it's worth bringing up because I haven't fully vetted it with the rest of administration, so.
We could look at transportation because we have transportation that we provide for after-school programs.
That's one of the items.
Athletics. We could do a breakdown of all of that because that's another area that we could look at that we have to cut. When we talk about the subs, we may have to look at the, you know, when you say a savings within the sub-line, right now, we have, we have a daily building teacher sub and TA sub that's built in. Maybe we, we need to look at that, and that could be cuts that are savings. There are other things that we could look at too. We just need more time to really look at that. We pulled that directly from the budget that we knew if we took this out, here's enough, here's the.
So when, so that was gonna be my question, because we just, I know you just put it together. We just got it at three, so we haven't had time to digest it. Like, when, when does this need to be like determined by?
Before Monday.
Okay. So looking like, just brainstorming like quickly, right? Hearing Shavali talk about like math scores, I'm not sure pulling the math interventionist, like doesn't seem like the way to go. I think we all know how I feel about the equity. Like, you mentioned transportation in terms of after-school, but I just wonder in general, like, are we utilizing our transportation efficiently? Like, half of those buses are empty. So have we considered, you know, like, looking at transportation as a whole, giving parents like the ability, asking them even, are you utilizing it, right? Like, and seeing what we can do like in that area? I noticed we, like later on in the agenda, we've added Coda to our long-term subs. Like, why is that? Are we left, like not, do we not have that position? Are we not utilizing it?
No, that, that was there, that way, if we need a long-term sub, we can.
Right.
So we've got two point four million dollars in stipends. I know I harped on this repeatedly during the budget process, but I can't believe that we can't like peel a little bit off there. That seems like an area to look at.
Can I speak to that? Just because that is actually, there are two areas of stipends that we actively looked at and that I was going through. In particular, with Dr. Clark going through some of the ones that are, she directly manages, and that really going through and, and looking closely at what is budgeted and what has historically been used. So she and I are in the process of doing that to see if there is an area of savings there, which obviously, if there is, we can, you know, without it impacting, without having any issues with the collective bargaining agreement or anything like that.
And then really kind of dug into what those curriculum stipends are. Some of it's curriculum stipends that are paid to teachers to do after-school hour curriculum work to sit on committees and they get paid for it. We looked at the stipends for the web masters, people that, you know, so we are looking at.
I'm not looking to remove something that's actively being paid, but if we're budgeting it just because we've historically budgeted it, like, can we look at?
And that's what, that's what we are doing. So we're looking at comparatively like.
Jen, I just wanna correct my sentence. In theory, we would have information provided the town and we present on Monday. We don't actually have to make a decision regarding this until after the town approves our budget. And then, because until they approve it, it's not real, right? And so, but my personal opinion is that we should have an idea. I can't imagine a town council that's not gonna ask us, well, if you're not, like, with this information.
That's why I'm like.
What goes? So that's, it's not so. I said it, but like, it's not.
In an hour, right? Coaching, coaching, same thing. There's a ton of coaching dollars budgeted. How many of those positions were actually filled like over the past couple of years? I feel like there might be some money there, especially in the athletic budget in general, right? I think we can probably pinch some off of there. And I'm just gonna toss this out there, the lease of this building, right? Like, I, I think that that's a big nut that we can probably save some money on.
Well, so you each to one school.
We, I actually, we both proposed that, we're like.
That's, that's a hundred and thirty thousand right there.
I put it on the table in our discussions, but it's like, where do we go?
We voted and mandated you to move, and then you came back and told us no. I'm just saying, I just wanna say.
If I could have come up with a better solution, I would have. I would have.
It doesn't all have to be anyone building. Like, I'm not gonna lie, I know you love that beautiful conference room over at DA, but that could make a couple of offices, right? Like, so just like being creative. I hear Rachel making noises.
Yeah, we need a training room, otherwise we're in victory. We, we have to have a place to train people like safety care and stuff.
Well, I'm just, I'm following ideas.
And.
We, we, we said, we get rid of this and have mobile offices.
And last but not least, the town does a fabulous job of writing grants for things. Like, who, who is our, like, we, we should see what we can do to like stimulate some of that grant writing here for us also to pay for some of these things. So that was what I came up with in an hour. So I look forward to seeing other ideas.
We were hoping that other eyes and brains looking at this would give us other suggestions, so.
Well, Jen came up with a bunch in an hour.
Well, I will say, so.
I did read your email, I'm talking about here, so.
To put dollar amounts on some of the things that we were talking about that aren't on this list, because again, without being able to have full conversations with people, you know, Because again, without being able to have full conversations with people, you know, school vacation week, I don't want to just drop bombs on people as we're walking in. But like the late buses that Dr. Duvan is talking about, that's, we have seventy six thousand dollars budgeted to that. We have, I'm not saying we're getting rid of this, but like summer school. It's not a requirement. We have eighty thousand dollars budgeted for summer school with twenty thousand dollars budgeted for transportation for summer school, not E S Y. Talking about summer school. So right there, that's a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. So there are items there. It just, I feel like these are programmatic changes that I cannot just say we're going to be. I I can't, I couldn't put that out there because that's not my job. My job is to say, we have some redundancy. We have some things here, suggestions.
That you're talking about are things that we put in place over the past two years to try to address current issues in the district. And so last in doesn't always mean first out. Like, you know, the the reason that we have that is so that students can go to after-school care to get help with their academics because they're behind because of COVID. You know, like, so I think like looking at it from what's best for students educationally is is kind of, you know, that has to be the north and figuring out what that what will make sense there.
And and I agree wholeheartedly, which is why I didn't.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And I think every, everything on this list, we can argue we need. Just like we're arguing the last in, first out could be. We looked at it too. What was a position we put in last? There was a clerk position. And we went back and thought like, that's needed just because we put the, you know what I mean? So I think everything that we have, we can argue that we need. We're trying to find anywhere we can start taking away little by little.
Graduation's back on the grass.
And will any of us have time to go to the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee? In other words, I know we need something or we should technically have something for Monday, but and I know their next meeting is not for a while, but I do know we also don't need our actual budget till June. And obviously, that's kind of what that committee is for, for ideas and suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, we would definitely put this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. And and like Dr. All said, we have to go to the town and we won't, this could all be, you know.
It's, I think it's way at the end of May, though. I want to say May twenty fourth or something.
May nineteen.
May nineteen, yes, so. But you'll still have time to get it to them.
And and it's it's hard to fully make decisions on this without knowing what the town is going to actually appropriate to the district. So that I agree that we need to have some concept and some direction. And I'll be on the same page of where we want to go going into that meeting. We won't really know what we have to do until that number is given to us by the town. And then from there, that's when we have to truly make tough decisions for different things.
So. Can I make a motion in this?
Yeah, if we go back, like, we need to have some votes on.
So while we are in this, if you're ready to break it up, or can I make individual motions?
No, so we only need to, in theory, out of these, it's. No, we don't need to do anything for D. It's just A.
Well, we have to make a motion for him to send a letter, right? Isn't that what you?
Well, we could do, we could do that, but the school committee didn't vote on. Like, we we could, okay, let's do A first. That's easier than that. All right, so do we have a motion for A?
I will make a motion to, uh, recommend that the pre-K move out of Fish and Cove to Davisville Academy for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Is this where I can say something though before the motion or once?
So we make, we have to, if she gets a second, then we do discussion. Because if nobody else wants to support that, then it just dies.
Yep.
I'll settle that.
And let me just clarify, is that motion big enough for, because there's other moving pieces as part of Rachel's proposal?
Those are just adding the positive part, which is when we move, when we move special ed programs around, we don't need to come to you.
Yeah, so once we move the pre-K, the rest doesn't need.
Yeah, that's my understanding of the presentation, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure it didn't encompass everything. Okay, so Jen made a motion to, okay, and then.
No.
Now, yeah, now you can have discussion, I guess.
So in good conscience, I will not be voting for this pre-K move to DA. I've thought long and hard about this and in fact, my opinion has changed over the months because of the bond issue. I feel that we do not have a handle on a long-term plan for the district and really our building utilization, the new build as well as the existing buildings. The fact that we have a potential preschool build that might be added on to the Wickford Middle School in three years, although it's not right now with what we need, I think it's very concerning to me to be putting all of this money into a move now only to potentially and probably, well, maybe, I shouldn't say probably, have to move in a few years from now to a new preschool in Wickford Middle. If I thought that we could just convert Davisville Academy to the preschool and I knew that for a fact, I could vote for this. But I just think right now for me, there are too many moving parts. I also, I understand that there are a lot of students with special needs and that number is only growing. But that actually concerns me even more because I feel like if this continues, what is our long-term plan for the district for those students if that number continues to grow as it seems like it is, especially even just from last year to this year? Where are we going to continue to put those students? I don't know if that's something we consider for the new Wickford Middle build. That's the problem, I don't know. I don't know what I don't know. And I just feel like all this information is just coming at us and there are so, like I said, so many moving parts. And I really want to be able to say that I could support moving something right now because obviously we're being told that the need is there. I just don't know if this is the best way to do it. And I just, I just feel like there has to be another way or there has to be able, the the ability to convert Davisville Academy into a preschool program, an early elementary ed program. I'd be fine with that and saying that's going to be our long-term plan, but right now, nobody has said that to us. So I know it's not what people necessarily want to hear. And, you know, it's it's a difficult decision, but this is just in good conscience. I just can't make the decision. I will not be voting in favor of this this evening.
Further discussion?
I just want to, I think I understand that, I really do, because in my, in my head, this was a piece of the puzzle too. But in looking at it and seeing it, I don't see it as being, and I I respect your vote because I I struggled with it too. But I don't see it as being a piece of the elementary redistricting and that was what was holding me up because I didn't want to like make that move and then be like, oh, man, we should have held off because we could have put this there. I really think that it it can be by itself, like the preschool can be there. And like hearing, I don't know what's going to happen with the middle school, but hearing that we would need to make that move regardless, like really like walking into Fish and Cove and seeing like that that was what for me like was like, oh, man, like that has over. I I've been in Hamilton, I've seen its crowdedness, but I had not been in Fish and Cove and really seeing like the, how cramped it is there and like the need for that space. That was really what like made my decision for me. And just, I really think giving some space there and giving the room, DA is just completely underutilized and like there was that room there and we can use it. And so that's what has, you know, I I feel like this, this needs to happen and it can happen independent of everything else that's going on. And that's why I am voting for this tonight.
Further discussion?
I I will agree with what Jen said. After, you know, actually going into the building, seeing the kids in the classrooms, seeing that Fish and Cove basically had a storage room the size of my hall closet in my entryway and that's literally the only storage they had. And that we've got teachers and professionals crammed in these, not even in closets, but with these like three-quarter walls and these little tiny areas and they're trying to to teach our students and things like that. It's very clear that there's a need there that we can't wait three years on. It's something that I I think, you know, I think it's, I think it's justified and I will be supporting it tonight.
For me, I think for the, you know, I I really thought a lot about this and I I know that the pre-K moving to the middle school is one of five options that we're going to look at. But I think for me, the the upstairs of Fish and Cove, where the OT and those spaces were like that, just cannot be conducive to to good and best practices for students. The staff also are making a lot of accommodations and I I want to commend the the staff in all of our buildings. Their morale is lovely, their commitment for students is so high. And even at Fish and Cove, where they were making a lot of accommodations and they were having offices at our closets and they were cramped, like, you did not feel that from the student perspective. But from, I think by making this move, it allows us to better utilize DA. From a mom's perspective, I was very concerned about the safety and security of of tiny humans. But I do think that with the wings, the way they are, it's actually a very identical building to Fish and Cove with the exception of the extra floor. Like, the way that's set up made a lot of sense from a fishing, from a pre-K perspective. And I think other than that one concern about figuring out the the nurse's office, I would feel comfortable setting my kids there with both Davisville Academy there and the pre-K. And I think investing in that building isn't a bad thing. I think it is a usable space and an opportunity for us long-term. Like, I think even if we didn't do the pre-K move, there is opportunity to expand there or expand with other other types of things. I don't think we should just let that building decay. Like, it's still a very viable, I think, facility for us to utilize. So that's why I made the the decision to support, so. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to add on to that. So I have also been in all the buildings and obviously many of you know that I am very supportive of what you all do. And this literally has nothing to do with the fact that I don't think we need space. I just would like to, again, have a long-term plan. So I'm still a no, but I hope that it seems like we're going to go forward with this, that we could maybe relook at then, the the long-term plan for the district and meet, if we're going to move here anyway, utilizing it for for the duration as a preschool. I would love to then see, I would love to see our buildings properly used. And if we're going to do that, let's do it, you know? Let's commit to it and let's say we're going to do it. I don't want to just sink hundreds of thousands of dollars into it for the next three years just to kind of, again, put a Band-Aid on something to get us through. I I just, I just need to start seeing some long-term plans for the district and the building utilization. So that's where I am at with this, so thank you.
Well, I think it's also possible, if whatever the state decides with their preschool bill as it goes through, even if it's passed in three years, it's possible we might need two preschool sites to fulfill that.
I said earlier that if we move forward and we build an at, an preschool wing, it may not be enough. And now moving the preschool to Davisville and doing what we need for that program gives us the space in the future if we need to have preschool in two places and two sides of the town.
Well, that's what I was going to say, by all intents, but it's just like the middle schools is.
As any waste, I see this as a building, this is a part of our long-term plans and having options for the district.
Just to be clear, I didn't say waste. I said, it depends on what we do with it. It it could be a waste.
I I know, and you didn't say waste. I'm saying, we're not wasting.
But I'm saying, even even to say it's a negative thing, it doesn't have to be. But I'm just saying, given the history of our decisions, I think that we really then, if we're going to commit to this, we need to not just commit to it for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. We need to then really delve into what is our long-term strategic plan for our district.
I think the other piece is too, even if the state doesn't support pre-K, like all the research and data shows that educating the students of that age is important. And I think in North Kingstown, although we do a very nice job, I think there is a lot more need. And I also think that the way that our system is set up, it is for those who are very privileged to be able to have a half-day program where you need to transport your child yourself, not have anything on a Friday and have to figure out childcare for that. Like, that is not accessible to all of the residents in North Kingstown. And so I I've always said that I feel like we need to look at how we can expand and how we can serve all students, not just the ones that are able to to make that schedule. Because it's a wonderful program and they do such a good job and and it would benefit us so long-term because the more foundation we can give students, the less, you know, the the better runway they'll have for the next twelve years that they're in the district. So regardless of what the state does, I feel like North Kingstown, we need to prioritize that. But I also know that comes with resources, et cetera. But I do think that this is a good move in moving us forward. So any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we don't. Okay. They, we get, they can't blame, we were thoughtful and they're. Thank you for your patience for the administration. I am well aware. Okay, so we do not need to do anything for the capital bond project. That is still with the administration. So there's no, no action motion needed there. And then for item C, anything? And then D? Jen, to your point, if you want to make a motion about correspondence from the school committee? Like, like Ken can always send a letter from the administration, but for it to be from the school committee, we need to.
Well, I I would like a letter to be sent. And so I guess, like, the question is.
I think it should come from us as the school committee because it is our, like, we approve the budget and like with, along with the administration.
Okay, so how do we make that happen?
Just say, I would say, make a motion to.
I make a motion that a letter be sent from the school committee to the town council addressing the, their preliminary approved budget and our shortfalls that have been discovered since we approved our budget.
The school committee and, and you mean school committee and the administration?
No, you said it.
No, I said it's true, I propose. In collaboration, I absolutely can go right and watch it. All right, that's fine, you can make that motion, give a second. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll draft that and get it over to the town. Moving on to item E. Hang on, motion for item E?
Make a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Duvan, anything you want on that one for custodial services?
No, you just asked us to look at the cost of those services. And so Mr. Murphy provided a breakdown of the additional.
This is my apples-to-apples.
Yes.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm here to answer any questions you have.
This is not in our twenty-six budget. Nothing.
Correct.
Nope. This is for future, not for next year.
As a reminder, this is a priority though because the union has come to us and asked, like, they, we have.
We said, we, we said we look into what that cost would be.
So we we did not generate this conversation. This conversation came from the union and our employees.
So under the direction of Dr. Duvan, I moved probably two months ago to invite certain other custodians in to measure our campus campuses and provide a full-on quote for custodial services for the entire district. I have received one of those two bids back thus far.
So we put out an official?
No, no, this is me bringing in to get a sense of what it's going to cost. There is no RFP out there.
It's just an estimate at this point, you couldn't act on it.
Yeah, it's simply an estimate.
Yep.
It was just to help get this information.
Yep. Okay. It is what it is, it's it's done.
Again, it just gives us idea of the services they offer, the price they're going to charge. And then we can hold up what we're getting right now as to what is out there, you know, what the market will bear or what is being offered from a a different custodial company.
But the attachment that's in here is what it would cost us to bring custodial services.
In-house.
Okay, so that, I think that was reviewed last meeting, was it not?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. So there's been a moderate amount of progress. If we want to move forward with this, I will continue to bring in the second custodial vendor, or actually.
I would, I would recommend putting out an official request for proposal, like a request for.
Like an RFP?
Yeah, RFP, yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's pretty significant.
And then we can put out an RFP and then not bid it, correct? Like, we can just say, no, we're not going to do any of these if we stay with with ABM. Like, like I would, that's how I would recommend moving forward, just because of same first thing list.
These are the startup costs if we go in-house.
Yeah.
But we could do an RFP to look at other vendors that could be used for the services.
Yep, so we have, the top one was.
I'm sorry, I don't have that presentation in front of me.
The salary benefits of the students, what the industry.
So if we brought it in-house, it would cost us an extra nine hundred thousand dollars is what I'm seeing.
Yep, that's true.
So that's not an option. And so, yeah.
I know, I just wanted to clarify because I think you had asked us to do an apples-to-apples and that's what these new numbers are. I don't think we ever got a chance to.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't talk about it.
We didn't talk about it. So before, we had brought it once, that's what we talked about. And we went back and looked at matching the exact numbers.
Yeah, because Chris had given us the ideal. So like if we had thirty employees right now, you gave us, actually, we need thirty-five to do this. So that that was the first one. Yeah, but we didn't talk about it, yep.
I see.
And then this is like the, if we did exactly what ABM is offering us, but we did it in-house, how much it would cost? And the difference is almost nine hundred thousand, or eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All right. So that seems like, yeah, and I think it's a huge conundrum or problem because that savings is on the back of our employees. Like, you know, so that money that we are saving is because they are not paying them, in my opinion, the wages that they should be getting and and we're not getting the service that that we would like either. So that is a bummer because it's a lot of money, but like, it's a lot of money because of how we got here, I think.
I think the reason we are here is because the lack of service over the past two years was very much a point of concern. That service has, from what I've seen over the last eight months of my employment and prior to, surely prior to, has started to improve. There has been some turns there. Certainly not, it's still below excellent expectations, but there has been progress made.
Good news, I'll take good news. I'm just saying, like, we don't get it a lot, so. Okay, so I would, basically on this one, I would defer to the administration on kind of what. I I personally don't think the school committee, I I don't want to make a charge, but I would like the administration to think about, you know, if if we want to just stay with ABM or if we want to go out to bid for another custodial company, I I don't know where in this world we would find nine hundred thousand dollars in this next budget. So that's not, not. So that's not, not, unfortunately not an option for, I don't think, at this point.
But I would be interested in seeing, like, what else is out there, because, I mean, I, I, is, is ABM, like, in the ballpark? Are they not in the ballpark? I would like, I would be interested to know what else is out there.
Uh, I too, I could have a, a reasonable RFP put together within the next two weeks and published on BidNet.
I would defer to Ken, though, like, that would come from, I feel like that, right.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, and I would say, I think it makes sense that we do that, and we could put that forward, and what we'd have to do is we have to bring an RFP back here if he would approve. Well, you'd have to approve us putting an RFP out there.
Can we make a motion to do that at this point, under this one? No.
Yeah, explore it, exploration of alternative service options.
Yeah, okay, so can we make a motion for that, so that the administration can move forward?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to put an RFP out, um, to explore alternative custodial service options.
District-wide, district-wide.
Does an RFP include, just to clarify at this level, does an RFP include dollars?
Yeah, it would, they, they would have to, it would cost the actual cost.
Yeah, it would, right, alright. Just wants to be real clear.
And then we would make a decision based on.
He, he, yes.
Q, alright, perfect, I just wanted to make sure we were not just getting like, this is what we can do without the financial impact part.
Yes.
Alright, and then.
Second.
Yep.
Alright, so we motioned second, um, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so.
Do we have to watch the time?
Yes, I think, yes, maybe it's ninety, ninety-six.
And I don't have, we're on a looking table, anything on this agenda for the next meeting, and just do what we have to approve for tonight?
Our next meeting in a month?
Well, we're gonna need to schedule another meeting because of the big deadline.
Can we table the policies? Are any of the policies time-sensitive right this second?
Alright, we got, wait, hold on. Okay, so.
Before, before we leap to the next page to talk about it, could we talk about F, item F?
Yeah, we are.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, wait, can I please, okay.
And G, don't worry.
Somebody give me a time, and then we'll figure out what we need to prioritize as a second.
I'll, I'll go to ten-thirty right now until we figure out what we're doing.
Okay. So we motion to extend to ten-thirty, do a second, any discussion?
Did you get that Stephanie? Okay, sorry, Jen, I mean, motion to extend to ten-thirty, a second, and, or some, yeah, second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Alright, okay, so we got till ten-thirty, and we'll see what we can accomplish. Um, 'cause this agenda is long, but it's also 'cause we only had one meeting in April, so we are doing two meetings worth of work in one. And if we push, we'll just have more in the next one, so let's see what we can do. Um, next item, can I get a motion for the East Coast base?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, discussion? Chris, you wanna explain any of that, or you want?
Yeah, this is a change order for the, um, masonry rehabilitation of the Hamilton Cove Walls and Courtyard took place this past summer into the fall. Um, this is nineteen thousand dollars' worth of, uh, charges that we had to incur that were necessary for this renovation to, uh, proceed. These were issues that were not evident upon just a general inspection, um, of the architects and the contractors who did the work. Uh, once they started to tear down walls, they saw issues internal involving structural supports where they tied into the cinder block walls that had to be, required major renovation. This repair could not have proceeded without these, uh, these changes, without these additional items, uh, of work that were performed.
So what are you ask, what's the, what?
Uh, the change orders for nineteen thousand dollars, we're asking you to approve the payment of the work that's already been done.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, this is already, we're, we're, we're catching up on this one, for lack of a better word? We should assign this a long-term deal.
And when the approval was done over the summer, um.
No, I see, October.
It needed to go to school committee, when I went, when I got the invoice, and I finally got everything with the full bill, I went through and noticed that there was no school committee approval, so I.
Got it, here we are.
Here we are, and even if we had had it, we had had school committee approval for the prior, because these are paid with capital funds, I would have to come to school committee again, because it is.
Here we are, okay.
Here we are, okay.
Andrew, do we need to do anything different with the motion?
No, we'll have to approve.
Okay, so any further discussion regarding this?
Where's the money coming from, out of the budget?
Came from, came from past month.
It has not, it, the invoice has not been paid.
Top.
So the invoice has, we have not paid the invoice, I held it as soon as we didn't have it, so the invoice has not been.
We didn't pay the invoice, okay.
It's gonna be the town capital fund.
So we approved the work, we just haven't paid the invoice, got it.
It's coming from the town capital fund? Town capital fund.
Yeah, so the rest, the, the balance, so the two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for the rest of the fund came from the town capital fund.
Got it, got it.
So, but I cannot authorize paying that bill without school committee approval.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? And we anticipate this will be like the end of this project, like, we're, we're not easy for that, alright.
This is the last though.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll, um, make a motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to G.
So this was on once before, uh, we asked for additional information, um, regarding the contracts and the, um, information on bill, uh, information on the bill of sales or any information regarding the, uh, bus contractor purchasing the new bus. I believe that was in here for you.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
So it looks like we got an email basically saying that they were gonna buy a new bus, but no, like, bill of sale or anything like that, okay.
Legally, would this hold up? If we like approve it upon this? I, I believe in good faith, but you know how much I, I don't love.
Yeah, no, this is, I, I, I mean, at least what I see in the packet is just an itemization of, of what's on the bus.
Can we hear Mr. Gardner?
Mr. Gardner?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello.
In a long way of that. Faced with a bus, Fenwick Gardner Jr., Fletcher Road, been in town all my life, second-generation bus contractor, thirty-five years in the public safety arena in this town, myself, my children, all been through this, this, uh, school system. I'm just looking to continue on with a, a credible, uh, transportation, uh, business and opportunity. And, uh, to extend that, the bus that we have now that currently runs as Bus Five is, uh, is, uh, end of, uh, its first, uh, end of, uh, its contract, and so it requires a renewal. As in the past, you know, we've worked with the town, I've worked with the school department, um, I know it sounds unorthodox, but I need some sort of approval from you folks to wanna commit a hundred and thirty thousand dollars or even more, um, potentially, so.
Yeah, it's a weird circle, we agree. Um, is that, I mean, I think it's good enough, Andrew, like.
Yeah, I, I, sure.
For the record, we'll put begrudgingly here, Andrew. I mean, I think we have to take it, the committee can decide, approve or not approve basically.
This certainly follows the practice that's been done in the past, that I, I, it's, it's not out of the ordinary, of, of what's been done in the past.
Yep.
Description in there.
Can I just say, like, it, based on the history with this person, I feel comfortable, but can we maybe establish a new future practice where this is not how it's done?
I think that would be a great idea.
So we'll work on that later, but I agree with Jen. And, so, um, any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any further, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, calendar, twenty-five, twenty-six, if we don't do something with it, Jules will find us. We are getting tense.
She's literally watching right now.
Hi, Jules. Oh, I know, I know, I know, I know, okay, so, we have the calendar in front of us, there has been ne, no changes made, correct, since the last time?
No changes.
Okay, can I get a motion for it?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor approving the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Um, I do wanna, I'm hoping that we will get to some policies, but I would like to make a recommendation to go to RF, the, the things underneath new business.
Yeah, let's skip down, yep. I will second that, yep.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to skip to new business next?
I will make a motion to skip to new business, A.
Just, just go, I would just go new business, and then we can work.
Oh, okay, I make a motion to new business, make a motion to, do we need to just, I make a motion to approve the RFQ?
No, so first, we have to change the agenda order.
Okay, make a motion to go to new business.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion for the RFQ.
I will make a motion to approve item A.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I just had a quick question, um, I don't know why you just kept giving me that. Okay, so I just had a question on A, um, given that we don't have, I, I just wanna make sure that because we don't have, um, really know exactly where we're going with the bond, is this going to change anything with the RFQ? Is there anything?
So the, so the current contract, Rouse, who's the architect for the Captain Blue Project, their contract is through stage two.
Right.
Okay, so we're, we're preparing ourselves, so that way, when we hear back from Ride regarding approval of stage two, we're able to move into stage three.
So, yeah, so I just wanna make sure there's nothing in the language that needs to change, nothing that changes because we haven't yet.
There's nothing yet. No, this is just because the contract is up, legally, we have to go out to bid to do this.
Yep. Okay, that's fine, that's all.
And I wanna set us up so we are ready, and the timeline is matched up with all of the meetings that need to be to have this approved.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So then once you get the bids in, then we'll approve it, and then it'll, just continue right.
Two.
Yes.
To Megan's point, though, it's not a big change, um, because we just approved the pre-K thing, it just says one, nine facilities, including one pre-K five elementary school, but that is no longer true. So it's gotta change.
It'll change over right now.
Like, one little sentence, it's not a big deal, buddy, it is a change, it's not accurate. Just that first, it's in that first paragraph, Ken?
Because tomorrow, Chris is gonna post these.
No, 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 that's great, but I just, like, since we could make it accurate, let's actually make it accurate.
We'll do that for both documents.
Great, thank you. Other questions about the RFQ?
Nope.
And the, you said these are both reviewed by the trust and?
They were reviewed by Andrew, they were reviewed by the trust, they went to the Building Advisory Committee. They've had many eyes looked at, and many eyes and brains together have looked at this document.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're, um, we'll move for approval for RFQ, um, item A, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carries with that small change. Um, moving on to item two.
I will make a motion to approve item B, the RFQ.
Second.
Sorry.
Okay, any questions regarding this one?
I did have a question on this one, and I'm trying to find it, there was something in here where it says that this one must be, uh, reviewed or approved, must be reviewed by the Building Advisory Committee, and there was also a timeline in here, and I just wanna make sure.
Both of them have timelines, both of them go back to Building Advisory Committee, it's all been set up by the dates.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I mustn't miss that, that in the first one, I just wanted.
That's why this meeting had to, if, if we didn't meet today, it all got set, which is why we're here today.
So everything falls in line, okay. That was my only question.
Yeah, these will get posted tomorrow, it closes May, Friday, May 2nd, and then it goes to Building Advisory Committee, School Committee, and then Town Council. The Town Council meeting is June 5th, or.
Cause they have to approve it.
The, it closes May 2nd, and then when is the Building Advisory?
Like that next week, I don't know, the dates are in the document.
Building, Building Advisory is May 7th.
May 7th, then, then it would go to School Committee.
Yeah, and then, School Committee is May 6th. We, we literally lined it up, like, it's, and that actually is right.
Yeah, and then it goes, then it goes to School Committee after, I think it's around May 20th or something, and then it goes to Town Council, which is like June 9th.
Okay.
To the last town council. Of course.
So.
Let's try to put the Building Subcommittee the day before the School Committee meeting going forward.
Like, literally the day before?
No, I've also said that, like that, not the day, but.
You mean all, all meetings, so, 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 we, so we've.
At least before.
It is two weeks every time.
But we also, we've tried, we, we're, we can talk later, we're limited, we're limited with the days with all of the meetings, so we, we've, we've tried, but
You're sure.
It's also trying to coordinate every single advisory meeting with other meetings in the district, and, but you make a very good point for us to do that, we did try to do that.
Understood, okay.
Alright, any other questions regarding the RFQ?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none, um, we did a motion to approve, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie, I found your fiscal year twenty-four.
Oh, we found it!
Well, can I just tell you, I thought this was coming first, so that's why.
It didn't, it didn't come first, it wasn't listed first, but here we are, I literally, I was like, I've lost my mind, I know I put it on there, and now.
I knew I had it in there.
Um, so on that item, is there anything that you would like to say?
Uh, well, can I now?
Very, yeah, now you can, 'cause we found it.
Yep, sorry, I, I thought it was gonna come in a different order, so, um, so the, the main thing that I wanted to just point out, so this is just our normal projection, um, that, um, you'll get now, you'll, till the end of the year, I'll give updates, this one is through February, because I missed the meeting in March. So this is the first meeting that I've had, and I didn't wanna just give it to you and not be available for questions. So, just, the main thing to point out on here is for fiscal twenty-five, we do have, um, a major fiscal impact, which was the quarter-two projections from statewide transportation that show that we are anticipating going from five hundred and thirty-nine thousand from their quarter-one projection to seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand for their Q-two projection. And to point out that our budget, our original budget for that was four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so there's a big jump, um, in what we're expecting. And, um, I have accounted for that in the current projections that are attached, so when you look at where we look, where we're gonna end, that amount of money is in there. But obviously, it's a large concern, because, um, we were not anticipating that, so as soon as I was aware, I wanted to make sure that the memo was out, so that you had it, and you were aware.
Do we have enough money?
Right now, we do, right now, um, we have enough money, um, so if you look.
It's a valid question.
No, no, absolutely, which is why I wanted to make sure it was on the memo and not lost somewhere in the projection. Um, and this is something that, now that we have, I can send to, um, now that I've, um, presented it to you, I will also be sending it to the Finance Director at the town. So anytime something like this happens with our current budget, these numbers, and this projection was also reported on time to the Department of Revenue, um, for our quarterly report. So this is the projection that went, that we, was most recently signed and submitted, so all of the protocol for reporting of that budget, the, the twenty-five budget change has been followed, even though I'm not getting to you until April.
Um, can we also, when we send it to the Finance Director of the town, also see the town manager and the town council in it?
Absolutely, and they, and, and the other memos that I gave you regarding healthcare and this transportation, um, they also, um, had asked for, but I can't send it to them until I present it to you, so they'll be getting all of these memos, um, as well as the one for the workers' compensation, 'cause they've all.
And the letter that we wrote.
Hmm?
And the letter we're writing.
Yes, so they're just gonna get a, a lot of documentation, um, but I, I.
No, I'd rather over-communicate than.
And the Finance Director, I did let her know, like, that these things would be coming, but, that I needed to present it to you first, and she agreed. Um, so she, she is aware that, that these will be coming. The, just, the quick items that are on here, um, right now, when we look at it operationally, we are looking at being over-budget operationally right now, where we're standing, based on my projections. But again, we have some cushion that's coming in with some additional revenue, mainly with the, um, earned interest income. And that's where, right now, based on that overlap, we're showing that we'll have a positive end of the year of a hundred and eighty-six, um, five forty-five. Obviously, that can change in an instant, um, but right now, we have enough money. Obviously, the next report, if, if there's any additional issues, they'll be sure to be, um, communicated to you as soon as I'm aware of them.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions on that?
You touched on my two of them, was based on the way transportation's been trending, you know, do you anticipate it continuing to increase through the balance of the year?
I would hope not. Um, so, um, Dr. Duva, um, and, um, Ms. Hume had, and as soon as we received this, they had a conversation with statewide, and I, I believe they actually had a meeting. Um, I was not available for that meeting, but they, to, to talk about what the expectations are for the end of the year. And that, that conversation, it was, what we're seeing should be what we're trending, so like, if we're accounting for this now, and we're planning our budgets accordingly, we should be fine by the end of the year. I, I, I cannot predict that, because we could get another projection and it could be different again. Um, this is the first time I've ever seen an increase like this from quarter-one to quarter-two, I will be honest, this is, was shocking.
Then my other thing was, so it's, we've got three months left in the fiscal year, like, is that hundred and eighty-five likely to stick, or like, again, I know you can, but.
I'm, here are my concerns, and they're on here, my concerns are out of district tuition, um, in the last, since, so through budget through January and the beginning of February, we were looking pretty on point, and since that time, we've had additional DCYF students, we've had some outplacements that we, um, weren't anticipating. And so, we had a big, we had a, um, a big change, a big flux from like January to the end of February in that tuition. I would hope that as we're getting closer to the end of the year, that we're not gonna see that increase, but that's one of those numbers that you just don't know, because we could get a new student tomorrow, and that's a hundred and forty thousand. and that's a hundred and forty thousand. I will say, and I know we kind of touched on this, there are, like, tuitions that haven't hit yet that aren't factored into this projection that will help to hold that number and offset. So, um, and our, you know, I, at the time I did these projections, we've now since had a month and a half of interest income, and that is trending well, and it's trending along the lines of what was projected, so I think that will help us. So I would like to say that yes, we're gonna be able to hold this.
Any other questions?
But I can't guarantee.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, no action needed on that one, thank you so much, Leslie. Well, the actions will happen, but there's no vote needed. Um, so moving on to item D.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay?
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recuse.
I just need a second.
I need to recuse.
Just don't, not yet.
Yeah.
Um, so Jen made a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, if Megan wants to recuse, should you step up for the discussion?
I'm going to step up anyway.
Yeah. Okay, bye. We'll, we'll get you when we're done. Okay, um, so any discussion on this item?
Uh, I had a question. The clause in the memo about not hiring the ESS candidate, does that apply just to the positions that we added, or does that apply to all of the employees?
So like, if someone's up for us, we can't hire them for one year? That, that's.
That's for everybody.
I should say, my recollection is, it's been a while since I read that.
And I just wanna put my annual reminder that I would really like to look at options for getting away from this company since we're one of the few in the district, I mean, in the state that use them, so just, it's my annual.
We can put out a.
She wants you to bring it in-house, but she doesn't mean paying someone else.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, actually, honestly, I don't necessarily even care about that, but I just, like, we are one of the few. I was told there wasn't anybody else.
Like, dollar savings.
Yeah.
Is there somebody else?
There's one other district.
No, is there another company that does it?
No, but there's only one other district that uses them, other than us.
No, the question is, is there another company that does this?
I was told there wasn't.
So like, it's in-house or them.
But we know that, we've talked about this, and there are internal concerns about bringing internal and having the internal staffing to oversee this and payroll and all of that.
I, I get that, but I just feel like there's thirty-three districts and only two use them. There's gotta be a way that the other districts in this, I mean, in the state have overcome them, so I just want to put that. It's my annual plug, yeah.
Um.
Why don't we say that's something that we will look into for the twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year?
Perfect.
We got so many other things we're working on right now, but I think that's something we can.
You can remind them again next year.
Oh, I shall.
Well, we could, we could start.
I'm just saying, I hear your commitment, but also.
No, we, we could start running into.
No, I, we get it, understood. Okay, the, we have a motion, people, we gotta move, okay. Uh, are we, are we, we are being asked to, um, approve this addendum. I don't love the can't hire, but if that's the only way that they will do it, like, that's, like, that means if we had a really good.
I think that's in all of our contracts, I don't think that's.
Why is it in as an amendment, then?
It's just, it's a clause in the memo, and I don't remember that being in any, it could have been, I'm not saying it's not, but it stood out to me in this particular addendum that it was in there. That's why I asked the question.
That's why I, I, I don't.
And it could have been buried in the contract somewhere, and I just.
This is the one that's like thirty-seven contracts, or there's like a million addendums, I don't remember tracking this.
It's just, it's never been in the memo before that I can remember, because I.
I have a separate addendum in my office, I'll overlook it, it fell out.
No, I mean, it's in the addendum, but we think it's in the contract, is what we're saying.
And I, I, that's why I wondered, was it just for these new positions, like?
Does this have to be done today? Can we get some information from Stephanie? ESS addendum?
Yeah, we can.
Which position is it for?
So this is, this is adding, this is adding the quota position.
This is the quota one?
This is, well, this is adding the, the, um, speech, OT, quotas, PTs. This is, so if we have needed someone long-term in those therapy services.
That's not clear by this memo, though. Like, maybe in the.
Yeah, because we did not have those positions in our prior contract, these positions are totally new.
These are, this is something new that they put, this is something they offer.
You need to go to addendum A.
I said, okay, we could, you know, if we.
No, I know, but those, the, the, those positions are not in our prior contract, like, they, we're adding these positions, which we did. I know. But sometimes they add them for, that's why I'm wondering if these positions, yeah.
Can we, we can.
Can we table this one for now?
Let's table it for now, because I just want to make sure we don't do something weird.
I'm gonna make a motion to table.
That, still making your faces up.
No, just, that was hot.
All right, all those in favor, tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Megan, we're done. She was really far away, I didn't think it was gonna work, but it did. Okay, next item?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve item E.
Second.
Okay, anybody?
Um, I, can, thank you for bringing this change forward to the community membership, but I had hoped that the second, or one of the two members would have a child in the district. Is there a reason why you didn't make that change also?
This is in the charge for the Building and Finance Advisory Committee, it just says two community members and, and doesn't specify that it would be impaired in the district.
Okay.
All right, so if we approve, Jen would like to make the change to that. Are we in a motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes.
To the back.
Take it back.
So then make a new motion to that.
So one currently having children in the North Kingstown school.
With, with one of the two members having a child who attends i- in the district, I would make a motion to approve with that edit.
Second.
Any other discussion regarding this revised charge? Their membership? Okay, hearing done, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to the next one. Building and Finance Advisory Committee recommendations. Anybody want to say anything about that one?
Um, I will.
I don't have my stuff, so I don't want to be that.
I will make a motion to approve.
These were recommendations that were voted on at the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee and are being sent to us.
Yes.
One was for the superintendent to, so you make a motion to approve, Jen, sorry. Do you have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay.
Um, I just want to say, like, I, can I defer to you and you all, like, as to the timeline that's listed, as to whether or not it's realistic?
Those timelines, yes, they are. I looked at that already, like.
Okay, but I, I do just want to note that I personally don't support removing the CEP provision. I quit, especially not while we're sitting on, like, all that money, but I'm not gonna say no to getting information on it, I just want to go.
I would agree with you that let's get information, let's look at it, clearly, we're ready, the information we already got from Trish, we can't recommend we get it right now.
Okay, that's all right.
So, I mean, let's just get it and see, like, how we're dealing with it.
Can I make a comment on that, too?
Yeah.
That we currently just received all the information because we have to start the renewal for that if we are going to do it, so that will impact whether or not we, like, if we're gonna.
So we can look at that next week.
That's what I'm saying, we're gonna have to do it in a timely fashion.
We probably could put this as a report out on our, like, very near future.
Okay, so we have this, we are, the advisory committee's saying, hey, School Committee, please ask the administration officially to do this, that is the question posed to us right now. Any further discussion? It sounds like the administration and the Finance Director are amenable to looking into these things, correct?
Yes.
Great, okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor of accepting the recommendation to the Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, moving on to G.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding this? What's the change?
Rob's off.
Taking Rob off.
Okay, anything else?
Not yet.
Great, okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve H.
Okay, any?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so these are membership changes to the school district and start time of transportation advisory committee membership. Um, it looks like.
Rob's on and Colleen Laughlin.
Colleen, I went on, nobody else off? Okay. Um, I do want to just make a comment about that one, that there has been some concerning questions regarding the community membership. And so I'm not advocating, I guess, a change here, but I do want to note the concern from the community about kind of what community members are on, what areas they're representing, et cetera.
So we have, as far as elementary, every school but Forest Park represented with a community member.
I know, I'm just noting their concern.
Yeah, and I did, and there's a.
You can note, you can note back that you heard it and don't want to make any changes, but I just.
And I mentioned before, our advisory, we also have a high representation of Hamilton parents on this.
Yep.
So they're.
But with all that said, they still don't feel fully represented on the committee. And so I think we have lots of opportunities for voice and whatnot, but I just wanted to note that officially. Um, any other comments or conversation on this one?
Rob, I thought you were already on the committee.
No. I've been going to the meetings, but.
That was silly of you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sound stuffy.
I don't even think I heard that.
Okay, he said, he said no. Um, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, next one.
Uh, so it's ten twenty-five, this is probably likely not a five-minute conversation, so I will ask.
Can we table it?
Yeah, we can table it.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling, aye, please, or please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I do want to go back to the.
Yeah, a second, I'll second the motion to table.
Thank you.
Aye.
All those in favor, aye. All right, so let's circle back, just for the, I want to at least get the first reads done so that we can get comments.
Okay.
If possible.
Yep. Um, so I will make a motion to discuss JICA student dress.
Second.
So this is the first read of a proposed new policy which would create a district-wide dress code. Currently, each school has its own, which has led to differences in what is allowed and how they are enforced. This topic has been addressed in various ways and with various stakeholders going back to twenty twenty-one and at the policy advisory level since May of last year. And while there has been improvement, implementing a district-wide policy will provide for greater consistency from school to school. We've received feedback on a few points, which I appreciate, and you have proposed edits based on that in front of you. They relate to footwear, backpack, hats and hoods and clubs, meaning like clubs, like associations, not like clubs. Uh, we will see this policy one more time before voting on it.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to the next one.
Uh, so I will make a motion to discuss BGA one, which is the Policy Subcommittee Charge. This is the first read of a revision to an existing policy which would expand the membership of the Policy Advisory Committee. It also adds to the policy the new practice we've been doing, which is community notification of policies that are upper reviewed by the School Committee, and it sets a timeline for policies to review, be reviewed by the committee. It also defines the process for policies reviewed by other advisory committees. The question was asked why a policy that is sent to a subcommittee would not be sent directly to the School Committee, and that's addressed in the language included in the policy unless otherwise charged by statute. If the School, uh, the Health and Wellness Committee is charged by statute with the Health and Wellness Policy, so that one would go right to them from the School Committee. The Policy Advisory Committee is tasked with making policy recommendations and anything else, unless specifically requested by the School Committee, we go through the Policy Advisory Committee. If the School Committee member is supposed to change that and edit can be made, we will see this policy one more time before voting on it.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Um, and I'll make a motion to table, um, the balance of the policies.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, correspondence? We've got two minutes.
Okay, uh, three eighteen, Patrick Mann, Cybot Neighborhood, Redistricting Comment, three eighteen, Jim Dyco, Curtsurn, Regarding School Security, three nineteen, Gillian Connor, Against Redistricting, Daniel Drive, three twenty, Holly Quinn, School Bond Project, three twenty, Elizabeth Hill Ross, North Kingstown School Committee, Building School Committee Meetings, three twenty, Matt McCoy, Rhode Island Educationer Commission, fifteen percent of state's school budget from the Department of Education, three twenty, Matt McCoy, Rhode Island Senate Committee Testimony Now Posted Online, three twenty-one, Holly Quinn, North Kingstown School Bond, three twenty-two, Karen Martin, Bond, Middle School Project, Equity Statement Promotion, Safe Schools Policy, three twenty-four, Carrie Miller, Carrie Miller Against Redistricting Plan, three twenty-four, Park Patel, Opposing Reynolds Farm Redistricting, three twenty-four, Shannon Baker, Daniel Drive Redistricting, three twenty-five, Catherine Demos, Hamilton Steam Day Indication, three twenty-seven, Barbara Ametano, Adding Fish and Co. Pop Principal, Colleen Laughlin, To The Redistricting Subcommittee, three twenty-seven, Peter Lucier, Binging Concerns About The Brooklyn Middle School Project, three twenty-eight, Holly Quinn, North Kingstown School Bond, three twenty-nine, Lizzie Schreiner, Concerns Regarding Redistricting, three twenty-nine, Matt Gendron, Redistricting Questions, three thirty, Ashley DeSalvo, Whitford Middle School Bond, At Fifth Grade to Middle and Eliminate Future Redistricting of Elementary, three thirty, Victoria Bennett Meeting, three thirty, Melissa Tuarog, Question About Twenty-five, Twenty-six School Calendar, three thirty-one, Pam Panera, School Bond, Pride Concern Should Be Addressed, three thirty-one, Karen Martin, School Bond Project, Redistricting, Reassignment of Pre-K to DA,